Good evening. We're going to go ahead and call the meeting to order.
Can we close the door?
Go ahead, roll call, please.
Mayor Edgar.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Kusamoto.
Here.
Councilmember Chirko.
Here.
Councilmember Hasselbring.
Here.
Councilmember Murphy.
Here.
Great. I want to ask everybody to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and stay standing for the invocation by Mayor Pro Tem Kusamoto.
Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please bow your heads. Great Creator in the heavens, I just thank you that we can be here tonight to carry on the business of the people. Lord, I know these are difficult times and in our hearts that we're doing the best we can for our community, for our stakeholders, for our families, and for the future. Lord, I just pray that you will be with us to give us wisdom and guidance. Lord, I pray for those in uniform, our police officers, our firefighters, our first responders, and those overseas that are protecting our liberties and our way of life. Please protect them as they protect us. Lord, I really pray for those that are present here regardless of whether they like this or not. I am so glad they are here that we get to hear their voice. This is the process in which we get to hear the people and understand and represent and be the leaders that we hope to be. And lastly, I pray for the staff. They are wonderful that you would protect them. They have been just so supportive in making us look good up here, and I just want to thank them for their hard work. So protect us all, in your great name I pray. Amen.
Thank you. Please be seated. You guys come on in. Tonight, we have a couple presentations that I want to be giving to a couple of people here. First of all, I'd like to call up to present certificates of appointment to our newly-elected Traffic Commissioner Christina Coxhill and our Parks and Recreation and Cultural Arts Commissioner Alexander Duran and Stephen Hunter. Could I have you guys come up here, please? So we want to welcome you guys onto the commissions. This is how it is every week here. So it's a little bit less people than normal, but I hope that you guys, we really appreciate your help, and let's take a picture. This next one is really special to me. I would like to present a certificate of recognition to Johnny Stromeyer. So tonight, we're recognizing Johnny Stromeyer for her service with the Chamber of Commerce. She retired for the fourth time last December. This is a complete dedicated citizen of our community and a dedicated person that really makes our community go. And you know, when she was going to retire, a lot of us, it was bittersweet because we are so appreciative of everything that she does, but she is very critical to make things happen here. So Johnny, we just appreciate everything that you do on behalf of the City Council. We want to thank you and we wish you the best.
Thank you. I'd like to say something, but I appreciate the fact that you all came out tonight just to say. I'm not quite sure what the chants are about, but anyway, I do thank you all. It's been a pleasure. My husband and I, and I'm not going to get into a lot of stuff, but my husband and I have been very active in the city, Dr. Stromeyer and myself, and this was his city as well. And so we've all truly appreciated everything that this city has given us, so many gifts. And ones through the school district, ones through the chamber. That's basically where we got all of our friendships, was through the chamber. We knew no one when we came out here in a 55 Chevy. So you know that we really do appreciate everything that God has given us and that this city has been able to grant with us as well. So I thank you all. I love the council, being able to work with you all. You've all become such close, good friends of mine, and I love you all, so thank you very much.
Chelsea. Chelsea. Next up, what we'd like to do, another special presentation, is we'd like to ask the Los Alamos High School Rugby Club to come up here and be recognized, and Dan Chase, their coach. Dan, can you come up here with your team? So you guys, let me make sure there's no more rugby players coming in here, and I know their parents are here too. We want to let them get in here. Hey guys, once you get your award, go to the sides because we're going to be taking a picture after your coach talks here. So you guys, before we take the pictures, I want to talk a little bit about the Los Alamos Rugby Team over at the high school. I had the opportunity of meeting with Dan Chase here, who's the coach, and quite an impressive guy. This guy came in, started this program from scratch, and basically, he's so convincing, he had the whole city council on the sideline in a freezing night, one night, trying to watch these guys go all the way. But I wanted him to explain to the community about this, and we really want to try and help promote the rugby team and some of the things that they're looking at for the next year.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor. For all that don't know, my name is Dan Chase. I just recently moved back to Southern California where I stepped away from, I was the Director of Sports Development and head rugby coach for Texas A&amp;M Central Texas. The gentleman who actually started this was actually Steve. Where's Steve at? Is he around?
Yeah.
There you go. He's way back there. He's actually the one who started the program. He heard I was in town, he asked me to come and help out, and introduced me to some great kids. We started getting things going, and it would just blew up on us. It was just amazing that we were able to take a ragtag team of football players and actually developing them into young men and rugby players, and teach them actually how to play real rugby. If you don't know the history about American football, American football actually evolved from rugby. Teddy Roosevelt ruled that rugby was too violent and dangerous to be played by Americans. And the interesting thing is, now the big controversy with football and concussions and everything else, rugby is actually the fastest-growing sport in the U.S. It's the second most popular sport in the world. Southern California, or California as a whole, has the highest percentage of youth rugby players throughout the whole U.S., and is fastest-growing sport here in California too. So looking at a bunch of pro teams coming to L.A., Orange County as well, that's within the next couple of years. It's really interesting and growing. Couple weeks ago, I was actually at the movie theater walking out, and I saw a young man wearing a USA Rugby Sevens jersey, or ball cap. And if you know anything about rugby, USA Sevens is done at Las Vegas International Sevens, where we took fifth place in all of North America, out of Mexico, U.S., and Canada in our division. And we beat the Canadian All-Stars 21 to 0. Okay? We're one high school with a couple other kids from surrounding high schools. We went against national teams, Olympic developmental academies, and we only lost to one team, and we only lost by, what was it, seven points? Or five points? Yeah, and it was an Olympic developmental team. These are kids that are hand-selected to go to the Olympics, so that just says credit to these young men. Okay? But going back to the young kid I met in the movie theater, saw his hat, said, "Hey, nice hat, where'd you get it?" And his dad said, "Oh, we just got back from Las Vegas." I'm like, "That's interesting." And we're sitting there talking, and they're like, "Yeah, my kid wants to play rugby at Los Alamos High School." I'm like, "Awesome." I was like, "Where are you coming from?" He goes, "Redlands." The family's actually moving here from Redlands, and throughout the last couple of weeks, I've been getting emails and contacts from other people, about four families are moving to Los Alamos just to play rugby. So credit to you, Steve, for getting this going. Okay? So, thank you.
Get the parents in here?
No, their parents are, they're only the children.
Oh, they're going to, I'm going to pull everybody up here. You guys want to get over here? We've got a bunch of space on this side, too.
Hey, put the rugby ball up there.
Parents over here to the right?
Yes.
Hey, where's the trophy at? Okay. Mayor, we as a team, we wanted to present this as a trophy for second place for high school, so you guys could put it up in City Hall and help represent. Where's that rugby ball at? So this is one of the rugby balls from Vegas?
Okay. So now we got to get this picture. Thank you, Coach.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, nice, nice.
Appreciate it. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Good luck, guys.
Thank you very much.
Okay. A couple more presentations, just real quick, please. Next up, I would like to present a presentation or proclamation to the West Cities Police Communications Representatives for National Public Safety Disfasteners Week, and I'd like to ask up here Michael Berry, Valerie Overll, Kathy Moen, Jessica Casio, Crystal Caro, and Cassandra Bowden.
So on behalf of the city, we'd like to give you this proclamation, and I'd like, if you could, just to take a few minutes to tell the community all the good stuff that you guys do.
So we are the West Cities Police Communication Center. We service the city of Los Alamos, Cypress, Seal Beach, and the Orange County Parks, and we're located in the Seal Beach Police Department, and we handle all your incoming 911 calls, your non-emergency calls, and any questions that you guys have.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The last item that we have is actually a presentation, so I think we're done up here. We're going to have the OCTA present us an update on the I-605 Cotella Exchange Project.
Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Jeannie Lee, Project Manager from OCTA's Highway Programs. Thank you for inviting us back to provide an update on Interstate 605 Cotella Avenue Interchange Project. We have made a lot of progress in the past year. There are three key agencies involved on this project as project development team, and I would like to acknowledge them. Caltrans as the lead agency and facility owner, OCT as a sponsor and implementing agency, and City of Los Alamos, and City of Long Beach as the project development team members. All the partnering agencies has been involved from the start of the project. The 605 Cotella Avenue Interchange Project is in the Measure M2 Plan, which was approved by voters in 2006, and we are committed to delivering this project. The overall purpose of the project is to improve freeway access, reduce congestion, and enhance safety at the interchange. The way we will do that is by minimizing, merging and weaving, and standardizing lane and shoulder width. As a side benefit, we'll add sidewalk and bike lanes. The interchange today is a mix of loop and direct freeway ramps with non-standard merges, weaving, and lane width on Cotella Avenue. There are discontinued sidewalks and no shoulders and bike lanes. The project includes three alternatives: no build alternatives and two build alternatives. This slide shows existing condition with no improvement. The next slide shows Alternative 2 improvements. All the improvements on the ramps and Cotella Avenue highlighted in blue consist of adding capacity or widening lane and shoulder width. Along Cotella Avenue, we're also adding bike lanes and sidewalks. Under this alternative, we're adding second lane to the northbound off-ramp to accommodate future traffic volumes. This will also help guide drivers to east Cotella or westbound Cotella. On the northbound on-ramp, we're changing the HOB bypass lane to a regular lane, which will improve capacity on the ramp. This slide shows one of the key project benefits to Cotella Avenue under Alternative 2 improvements. The top image shows existing condition, and the bottom image shows the proposed alternative. Today, on the westbound Cotella, there is a non-standard merging and weaving. Chris is helping me with the pointer. Within a short distance, concerns we heard from the city. Under this alternative, we would eliminate free right-turn movements and modify existing intersection. In addition, we would align all the lanes which would improve merging and weaving within a short distance and provide a smooth progression from four-lane to three-lane to two-lane for westbound motorists. Currently, on the eastbound Cotella, there's a similar non-standard weaving and merging within a short distance. This alternative would address those issues by widening Cotella east of the interchange and provide a clear progression from two-lane to three-lane to four-lane for the eastbound The next slide shows the proposed Alternative 3. The main difference between this slide and the previous Alternative 2 that I presented is the removal of southbound loop-on ramp. Again, the top image shows the existing condition, and the bottom image shows the proposed alternative. Removing this ramp eliminates weaving and merging on Cotella for westbound drivers entering and exiting the freeway, and it eliminates weaving and merging between drivers getting on and off southbound 605. Also, this eliminates uncontrolled pedestrian crossing at the loop-on ramp and westbound bicycle and vehicle weaving. Removing the ramp also improves the lane distribution of traffic on the westbound Cotella to the northbound and southbound 605 entrance ramps. Westbound Cotella motorists would get on the southbound 605 by using the direct ramp that Chris is helping me pointing, and a new signal will be added at the ramp entrance. We have developed proactive outreach programs to promote the availability of the environmental document for public review period, as well as to inform the stakeholders of the upcoming public hearing, which is anticipated to be on April 24. Our efforts include public information meeting that was back in June of last year to inform the public about the project, and the meeting was well-attended. We had over 60 residents attending the meeting. Briefings with the key stakeholders, including Rossmore and Los Alamos Unified School District, newspaper ads in number of local papers, direct mail, emails, and flyers to residential and business addresses throughout the project area, social media posts across the multiple platforms such as Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, outreach to business, civic, and residential organizations, as well as emergency service providers. As I mentioned, the public information meeting for this project was held back in June of last year. Since then, we have prepared a draft project report and environmental document that is anticipated to be circulated for public comments from mid-April to mid-May. A public hearing in open-house format is anticipated to be held on April 24 at the Los Alamos Community Center. All public comments will be incorporated after the review period. In mid-2018, the project development team recommend a prefer alternative based on the technical studies and public comments, and Caltrans is responsible for ultimate approval of the prefer alternative. We anticipate the project will be environmentally clear in late 2018. This is a key milestone because OCT is constantly looking for opportunities to speed up construction of Measure M2 projects, Measure M projects, by taking advantage of state and federal dollars. And the projects that compete the best for external fundings are those that are environmentally clear. And while Measure M is a 30-year program, our hope is that we can secure enough additional external funding to compete the freeway projects far, complete the freeway projects far sooner. This saves money by reducing escalation costs, allow M dollars to be used on other projects, and perhaps most importantly, bring the much-needed improvement to the public much quickly. As you have noticed, we have recently rebranded our Measure M as OC GO to differentiate from the L.A. County Measure M program. That concludes my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any question you may have.
Does anybody have any questions? And Councilmember Murphy, you're our OCTA board member, and we appreciate your service on that. Do you have any thing you'd want to add on this?
No, we're moving along. Hopefully, we are able to get the funding quickly for this and solve some of that problem there.
Cool. Yes.
Yeah, so I have a question. Thank you for being here. On slide number six, on the alternate three, you can get back, I don't know if you can, we don't get to see here. Okay, so on the westbound Cotella to southbound 605, the left turn signal there on the west side of the freeway, that pocket, is it sized properly for the amount of cars that you anticipate to, you know, queue up there to make that left turn, or is it going to be a priority on that light, I assume a protected left turn light? Have you looked at the traffic flow on that?
We've looked at traffic, and we, the goal of this project is to standardize the lane width to enhance the safety.
Understand that, but if the left turn pocket, and I'm not sure if that's a double, if it accumulates too many cars, it'll back up into the main lane, and that'll present a different kind of hazard. So my question is, you know, the timing of the light, is it going to be optimized to make sure we don't have an overflow and a backup?
Right. That's something that will work out as we go into the design phase.
Okay, but wouldn't the size of the, I'll call it the pocket, wouldn't that be kind of a limiting factor? How many cars you can?
It extends, the left turn pocket, it actually extends through the interchange. I don't know if you can see in the slide.
Underneath, underneath the overpass?
Right, right.
Okay. Ah, okay. I did not see that detail. So the.
It would take into those into consideration.
Okay. That was my question. Thank you.
Great. Anybody else have any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay. So that was the last presentation. I'm going to talk a little bit about the agenda, so we're getting ready to go into oral communications, but what I would just let everybody know, is this the oral communications for everything on the agenda except the item that we're going to talk about on Item 12A, with the sanctuary law? When I get to Item 12A, I'm going to stop the meeting at that point. Because it's an ordinance, I have to open it up for public comment, and you will have all the time that you need at that point. So just respectfully, I would ask you to come up if you have something to say in general for the rest of the agenda, or something under the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council, please come up, but if I do have to interrupt you to remind you to go to the next one, it's just, I'm giving you a heads-up up first. Can I go ahead and open up for public comment? Hi, Judy.
Mayor Edgar, City Council, I want to commend you on the beautiful completion on the Boulevard. All the people that surround my business, and I've been there going on 42 years, are delighted. Our only request is that you get it back down to two lanes rather than the three, because I personally have watched people crossing by Southland where a couple cars stop and people are walking, and the third one goes flying by, and I just think, people are agreeing with me, and I just think that that could be a real dangerous situation. I'm delighted that people can no longer turn left coming out of the plaza, because there again, you'd hold your breath. I mean, it was crazy. But you've done a great job. I think it's a big improvement to the city. I want to thank you all, and we have lights, and I'm very happy, and I just want two lanes on either side, and then we'll be cheering. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeannie. Hi, Jerry.
Good evening, Council. Thank you so much for your time. I wanted to echo what Judy said, is I do business on that street also, and with the three lanes, it's really dicey trying to get out of your car, and as you know, we've been, you know, at many meetings talking to you about the parking, so please, if you could consider that, it would be a great.
I want to thank you all. And we have lights, and I'm very happy. And I just want two lanes on either side, and then we'll be cheering. Thank you.
Thank you, Judy. Hi, Jerry.
Good evening, Council. Thank you so much for your time. I wanted to echo what Judy said is, I do business on that street also. And with the three lanes, it's really dicey trying to get out of your car. And as you know, we've been at many meetings talking to you about the parking, so please, if you could consider that, it would be a great help to us. And I know early on, we talked about potentially maybe putting a crosswalk there for the area that Judy talked about. I have seen a lot more people crossing, just jaywalking, and I'm afraid someone's going to get hurt. So if you can find some money in the budget, which I know is very strained, but if you have something to do that, I think that the neighbors on both sides would be greatly appreciated, and I think you might save someone's life. Thank you.
Thank you. How are you doing, sir?
Thank you so much. Okay, I'll put it back. My name is Arthur Shopper. Oh, that's nice. Okay, I'm from Torrance, California, but I'm already really impressed with this beautiful city. It's a real honor to see the words "In God We Trust" back emblazoned. Yeah, that deserves an applause, absolutely. Because either we're a nation of laws under God or a nation of anarchy under chaos. So I wanted to speak out on that. I am not speaking on the other agenda items, so please don't interrupt, but just bear with me. I have a picture on my shirt. It's a picture of Ruben Morfin. This young boy was 13 years old when he was executed by an illegal alien. And I was talking with someone earlier, every chance I have in a public meeting, it's important to give notice and respect to the thousands of American lives who have been killed by illegal aliens. I am from Los Angeles County, where there is a growing number of American citizens who are being murdered. And it is murder because individuals in this country illegally have automatically established it is a murder when they take an American life. He was 13 years old, executed by a gangbanger. His mother, Angie Morfin, misses her son to this day. His dreams have ended. These are the dreams that we need to reassert to the front of our public discourse. There is such discussion about the dreams of illegals. We need to care about the dreams of American citizens. I also wish, whenever I can, to commemorate the loss of Kate Steinle. I don't care what a jury said in San Francisco, it was a murder. She was murdered by an illegal. I also am a friend of Sabine Durden, her son Dominic, it was a murder regardless if there was criminal intent or not by the illegal. And this is to commemorate the average of 25 Americans a day who have been killed by illegal aliens. This is, again, I am respecting the rule of the decorum that you've set out. I would urge that this city council put pressure upon the Board of Supervisors. They need to consider ensuring that every law enforcement officer is able to cooperate with the rule of law. You are a municipality who can put the pressure to do that. And I also want to speak on behalf of Agnes Gibney's beloved son Ronald, who was also killed by an illegal alien gangbanger. And many don't know this, but for Agnes and for many parents who lose their children to illegals, they usually don't even find out that it was a foreign national until two months, three months, or a year later. This is a travesty in our country which we cannot allow to continue. And every chance I have, whatever breath I can take, I want to speak out for that. And last of all, I comment, I wear this hat proudly. It says "Make California Great Again," because I am glad that Donald Trump is our president because of the 16, the 17, the 19, the, how many people who ran for president? He was the only one who reached out to angel moms, to angel dads. Please don't interrupt. That's very disrespectful. I apologize. She was talking while I was talking. I have a right to speak in this matter. It's called the First Amendment. Thank you. So she was interrupting me. I apologize for that. Now, I'm glad he's our president because he's the only one who cared about those angel moms and angel dads. And I'm glad that he's our president, and I'm sure that we're going to have fewer angel moms and dads who lose their children, and there'll be more angel moms and dads who will see their children and grandchildren grow to a long and fruitful life. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Joel Block. I am not going to speak on any particular agenda item, but I am going to cover the content of the previous speaker. And since you allowed that speech, you'll allow my speech just as well.
I'll tell you what.
No, you are going to allow my speech because you cannot make a content-based discrimination. Okay? I'm talking about the general.
Sir, I'm going to stop you right there.
Let me speak and let me tell you what I'm going to speak.
Well, I'm going to tell you, if you start talking about illegal aliens, I'm going to ask you to move, and you can come talk about it when we hit to 12A. So there's your warning. So go ahead, and what are you going to talk about?
Okay. If you're going to, you could have any point interrupted that man and told him to stop speaking. You are the chair. I've chaired lots of meetings.
If you're going to talk, I'm going to let you talk, but you got to get to the point, okay? Please.
And he got to the point really quickly, too. Speakers at these councils are allowed to talk about the Constitution, immigration, racism. We have this issue that you're going to be talking about, okay? Let me take that back. The issue of immigration in general in the United States is rising to hysteria. People don't realize that the statistics in the United States show, at least the recently available ones, from 2008, excuse me, 2008 to 2015 or so, there's actually a decline in the numbers of so-called undocumented workers, undocumented individuals in the United States. The problem with this issue is that it's been present throughout American history. Ancestors of Mr. Chris Samoto, okay, individuals who are of Asian descent were fighting in the Supreme Court in the 20s to be allowed to be naturalized. An individual, it went before the Supreme Court, he had been 20 years in the United States, he had been educated at the Berkeley High School, he was a student at UC Berkeley at the time. And the Supreme Court in the 20s ruled that he was not allowed to be naturalized because he was white. Look it up. You can read the entire Constitution. The word immigration is not in the Constitution. This has been a political hot potato in the United States forever. You can hear it outside. The way you address it is diffusing the issue, keeping it in the proper form. If there's a dispute, take it to court. But let's not get people all up in arms about an issue that has been used to whip up hysteria throughout the United States and throughout the world. And all I can say is, I lost a whole bunch of people in Germany because there was no sanctuary cities in Eastern Europe. Thank you.
Mayor, if I have a point of personal order. So I know Mr. Block, I know him well. Our sons went to school together. I know the family. And, you know, I would appreciate, on the issue, and this is not going to be a debate, Joel, but when you invoke something of historic ancestry, you don't know anything about my family. My family was not in the concentration camps. They were not interned. My family came from Japan to Hawaii, Hawaii to here. So I, you know, I, personal, point of personal order, don't invoke that and apply it to me. Thank you. No, no debate. No debate, Joel. No debate, Joel.
So, hey, everybody, let me just try this one more time. You know what? We have some city business that we, I'm really trying to get to, to get through this. Just, you know, if, you're right, once somebody starts talking, it's hard to go ahead and stop. But I would just ask, if we can get people to come up here, if you have something other than 12A, we would really love to hear it so that we can move on to one other item of business so we can get through this. And then we will get to the item that everybody wants to talk about. So I'm going to give it one more shot. Go ahead, sir. Thank you.
Good evening. Honorable Mayor and members of the city council, my name is Chad Kirthing. I'm a resident of Rancho Cinemargarita, but I have some important information that will affect the city of Los Alamos and its citizens and its first responders' safety. I am a 911 dispatcher in the Orange County Fire Authority's 911 Center, where I've worked for over 10 years dedicated to your safety. As you're all aware, Councilmember Hasenbrink sits on the OCFA Board of Directors, where she represents the rest of the city council and all of Los Alamos's citizens. Currently, the OCFA Board of Directors is attempting to significantly decrease the daily staffing in the 911 Center from what it currently is by switching the 911 dispatchers from 24-hour shifts to 12-hour shifts. In fact, the new staffing reduction the OCFA Board of Directors are trying to implement will also cost half a million dollars more a year. This evening, I brought copies of the new 2018 study that was conducted by OCFA Executive Management on the 911 Center staffing. Upon our receiving of this study, the dispatchers conducted an audit of it. We found that the study is extremely flawed with errors. So in addition to you receiving a copy of the study, I've also brought copies of our response to it. You'll find a response that goes section by section explaining the many factual errors that are in the study. The study makes it seem like the activity level and call volume are much less than it actually is by underreporting the facts and figures throughout, to mislead and underreport. This misinformation is irresponsible at best. We are very concerned that the OCFA Board of, that the OCFA Board members are making the decision to downstaff the 911 Center based on wrong information and wrong numbers. Currently, you have 10 dispatchers on duty on OCFA property 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. We work 24-hour shifts but only get paid 17 of those hours. We do not get paid for a meal break or sleep time unless it becomes interrupted due to emergency activity. That means that at any time, you can immediately have up to 10 dispatchers plugged into consoles and taking 911 calls and firefighter radio traffic. OCFA Executive Management, as well as the Board of Directors, have been telling the public that the change from 24-hour to 12-hour shifts will not reduce our staffing level. That nothing, that nothing will change as far as the service the public receives. This is not true. In the study I'm giving you tonight that was conducted by OCFA staff, not the dispatchers, it shows in Attachment Number Nine, which you'll receive, that there would be 10 dispatchers on property, like now, two hours out of the day, instead of the 24-hours day you currently have for the last 30-plus years. In fact, if you look at Attachment Nine, you'll find seven hours in the day, but there are only six dispatchers on property. This is downsizing of 911 up to four dispatchers every single day. It is all there in the OCFA's own study on Attachment Number Nine. See for yourself when I hand a copy for each, I'm going to give a copy to the clerk for all of you to take a look if you'd like. As elected officials, your two major duties are keeping the public safe and keeping costs down to the taxpayers as much as possible. If the OCFA Board of Directors implements the new 12-hour shifts that will downstaff the 911 Center and cost a half a million dollars more a year, they will be failing at both of those duties. We have asked OCFA management why they want to change from the 24-hour shifts that give excellent coverage and service to the public to the 12-hour shifts. And each time, we are simply told that is the direction that the Board of Directors has given us, every single time that we bring it up in a meeting. Each time we ask, they refuse to give us any more information or reason than that. They cannot provide any factual information that supports the 12-hour shifts being better than the 24-hour shifts. That is because the 12s are not better. They will be a detriment to public safety. So in short, you're getting the most coverage for the cheapest amount by having the dispatchers remain on 24-hour shifts. Switching to 12s will result in far fewer 911 dispatchers on duty at any one time with no surge capacity. There'll be no backup when there's only six dispatchers on the property. And will cost the taxpayers, like I said, half a million dollars more. So you're paying more and getting less service. Remember, there are currently always 10 dispatchers on property. The Board of Directors wants to reduce that number from six dispatchers several hours a day. All of this comes in an additional price tag, like a cover of half a million dollars. What is going to happen when the short-staffed 911 Center receives a surge of 911 calls and radio calls from firefighters at the same time, which happens numerous times daily? Whose 911 call is going to have to wait to be answered when there's just not enough 911 dispatchers to answer it? Councilmember Hasenbrink, as a member of the OCFA Board of Directors, you and the other board members are ultimately in charge of the life safety of the 23 cities, including Los Alamos, and the 1.8 million people who depend on OCFA for emergency fire and paramedic services. Please tell me who in the county should receive less service? Who is not important? Whose emergency just does not matter? Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Who can I give the studies to?
If you can give it to the clerk or the city.
Thank you.
Who's this guy? Who's this guy? No, I know who Tyler is. The guy fixing the bike.
I know. He looks like he knows what he's doing.
Mr. Mayor, a member of the city council, I want to thank you for your time. My name is Tyler Depp. I'm a candidate for state assembly. I, boy, did I pick the right meeting to come here and introduce myself to the city of Los Alamos. A little bit about me, I'm currently serving as Vice Mayor of the city of Westminster, and I decided to run for state assembly because I don't want to stand on the sideline anymore. My family and I moved here in 1991, and I couldn't tell you how proud and fortunate I am every day, waking up knowing that I have the opportunity to live in this country. I remember as a child, riding a bike home from school in Vietnam, being overly joyful when I was told that the mailman just dropped off a visa notice so that we can move to America in 1991, after waiting in line patiently for over eight years. And that's why I want to run for assembly. And I applaud you for considering all the matter that is before you tonight. You definitely have an issue that is very consequential, not only to our community but our state and our nation. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comments? Okay, seeing none of it announced, I'm going to go ahead and close, move to council announcements. Councilmember Turco.
Sure. I recently attended the Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control District meeting. You know, they are starting to do city-specific reports, and the report for Los Alamos was very encouraging. So far, it's not been an unusual year for mosquito and vector issues. I also visited the Weekend of Art. What a great event that was put on by our recreation department. So thank you, Ron and Emlyn and everyone else, Megan, for that event. It was, it was just incredible, and there were a very large number of submissions this year as compared to last year. And I also participated in the Race on the Base 5K and whimsical run with the family. It was an excellent event, although my time wasn't very, very excellent. And I also participated in our Budget Standing Committee meetings with Shelley.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Chris Samoto, or, I'm sorry, Councilmember Murphy.
I also was at the Race on the Base, had excellent time, finished beyond, which was endowed. Attended Congressman Lowenthal's open house, always gives a good update as to where we are. Want to congratulate Megan and Emlyn. The Weekend of Art just keeps expanding, it was better every year. Some of the submissions were just incredible. And if I just take one second to mention Michael Bell, who's started this idea and has become his legacy, he's the most humble man in the world, but he's really started something I think is going to last a long time here. And if I could give a second to Judy and the lights, Stephen, Brett, just a phenomenal job, both the ground lights and the streetlights are, you know, just really phenomenal. It's Dave Hunt, too. Every, small part. You know, really, it's money well spent, looks incredible out there. And that is it. Thank you.
Councilmember Hasenbrink.
I attended the Los Alamos High School Mentor Breakfast. This is something they started a few years ago, and it's open to the juniors and seniors, and they're categorized by different professions. Kind of gives them an idea about what they think they want to do, and allows them to talk to people that are actually doing it now. So that's, that's very well received. I attended the Best and Bravest, honoring the best of our firefighters and support staff for the Orange County Fire Authority. And Race on the Base with everybody else. Congratulations to Mayor Edgar, being the stud of the group. Beat us by hours. And I want to congratulate our Park and Rec staff. They pulled off their first major event without a director, and looking from the outside, it was flawless. So congratulations on that. Congratulations to the Leif King and Queen of Hearts, Jeff King and Wendy Close. It's always a fun event, and they raise a lot of money for our education foundation that allows classes and scholarships for our school kids here. Attended the Sunburst Family Day on Saturday. This is our Sunburst Youth Academy over at the base for about 220 at-risk kids. It's a resident program for six months, and so this was the first time that the families were able to see them since January 5th, when they were intaked into the base. And then we also did confirm from the Orange County Fire Authority, Brian Fennessy is our new fire chief. He is the previous fire chief at the city of San Diego. He was going to, he'll be joining us on April 16th. Just a very forward thinker. He will be very, very good for the OCFA as we move forward. I was honored to serve on the selection committee and then also on the negotiating team for that. So we've got a very long-term strategic leader at Fire Authority. And regarding the negotiations for the union with the dispatchers, I'm not going to comment not gonna comment on that, we are currently in negotiations, we did go to impasse, and mediation starts in April, and that's about all I can say about that.
Great. Thank you, councilmember Hasselbrink. Mayor Pro Tim Kusamoto.
Thank you, mayor, and, uh, I was out of town a lot this, uh, past, uh, month, but, um, I did get to fill in for the mayor on a couple of, uh, events, and I, you know, that's, that's what being the Mayor Pro Tim is all about, so, um, I did go to the Race on the Base, I walked that, and I'm, I guess, uh, I, did we, you know, succeed compared to the commissions in terms of who, who prevailed? I'll find out later. Uh, and, um, what I got to attend on behalf of Mayor Edgar is, uh, Supervisor Michelle Steele's, uh, Mayor's Breakfast that she had over at Moscow Park to give us an update. And the update, uh, primarily was, uh, dealing with her, uh, the supervisor's dealing with the homelessness issue, as you saw in the news, and, uh, what's going on on the river, and the Judge Carter that imposed some, uh, requirements on, uh, all those involved, so I know that's coming up and an end on the hotel vouchers, but there was a briefing on that. And then the, uh, the real fun thing I got to do, um, is go to the Los Alamos Museum for Honored Citizens Day, and the museum was honoring, uh, Wendy Gross for all of her service, and Debbie Kent for all of her service as well. I got to, uh, recognize and hand out commendations on behalf of the mayor, and, uh, there was, um, former mayor Marilyn Poe, who was the emcee master ceremonies, and it was a wonderful event, as it always is. And, um, I guess the, uh, last thing I guess I would say is that, um, I know Mayor Edgar and City Manager Plumley had attended another workshop that was, I think, more focused dealing with the homeless, and I provided a briefing on that, and I hope that was helpful, I didn't really get any feedback on that, so, this is what I did, and back to you, mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I guess I would add, uh, had the opportunity to go over and, uh, celebrate Precious Life Gala, uh, over the weekend, and so I just wanted to thank them for the invitation, and I really loved the event. Uh, the Los Alamos Arts Festival again, I think a lot of these things we've all attended, but I would just put the exclamation point on it, the Parks and Recreation Commission, the Parks and Recreation Staff, city staff, excellent job with the art festival. Um, a, you know, every year, it just seems to be getting bigger and bigger, and, uh, a lot of feedback, everybody was really excited about it, so great job. Um, also attended the, uh, the Lafe King and Queen of Hearts, uh, and then the Race on the Base, and, uh, I, uh, the final numbers as far as the count of total runners on the Race on the Base and how we did, can we just get just a real quick update?
Yes, um, for rate, mayor, members of the city council, we were, um, down about 700 this year, but we were very excited to have the event in general. Um, we were at about 3,300 participants, um, and last year, we were at about 4,000. And to answer your question, Mayor Pro Tim Kusamoto, it was actually a tie, um, because at the current, um, vacancies of the two commissioners, uh, we had five in, in Parks, Recreation, Cultural Arts, and then we had the five city council.
Thank you.
Who had the best time?
Yeah, who had the best time, though?
That would be you, mayor.
Not us combined, it's, it's an averages thing.
Aggregates.
So, uh, and then, uh, you know what, I also wanna, uh, put out to the, uh, the base, the Joint Forces from Military Base, is that, uh, they had, uh, paratroopers come in, uh, for the race, and actually, uh, 12 of them parachuted into the race, uh, um, and it's hard having 3,000 people wait to run until they hit the ground, but it was exciting watching them, uh, land at 7:00 in the morning, and, uh, when they landed, they came and presented, uh, uh, the city, uh, flag, the US flag that they actually had brought, uh, from overseas, they had just gotten back from Afghanistan, and, uh, they presented it to us, and I'll be bringing that in, and we'll, uh, deep, be displaying that in city hall, so I, I just wanted to thank, uh, the general and everybody over at the base. Um, two last things, uh, everybody, Wednesday, State of the City address for the Chamber, that's over at the Joint Forces Training Base, uh, really looking forward to, uh, giving an overview of what's going on with the city and all the, uh, activity that we're doing here, and, uh, really wanna thank the Chamber of Commerce as, uh, our host and sponsor, and the military base, Joint Forces Training Base, uh, with, uh, the Colonel Bond over there, he's been unbelievable, uh, being able to support that, and we look forward to it. And lastly, the biggest plug that I have for a nonprofit that's, uh, dear to my heart is Casa U Shelter. Uh, Casa U Shelter has its 40th anniversary, uh, so as you know, over in, uh, Los Alamos, um, basically, they have their big event coming up on April 14th for the 40th, and, uh, the Casa U Shelter needs your support. Uh, please come out to this event and support, uh, that charity, they are taking young kids off the street, helping provide them a home, and then reunifying them with their family, it's an unbelievable cause, and, uh, I would just ask that, uh, you would come out and, and, uh, really show support. If you are unsure, look at Casa online, uh, that's C-A-S-A, and/or call the city manager, and we'll get you in touch with Casa U Shelter. Thank you, uh, so much. Uh, with that, I'm gonna go to items from the city manager.
Thank you, mayor, city council. Um, just to repeat, Weekend of Art, really successful, thanks to Megan and Emlyn and Ron for, and all the staff for their great work, and city council for your support in the community for coming out. So 260-plus, um, participants in this year's event compared to about 160 last year, so that was really good. We thank the school district for helping us to market the event as well, so it was really successful. And the little, at Little Cottonwood Park, uh, March 31st, Spring Carnival's coming up as well, so that will be on Saturday, March 31st from 9:00 to 11:00. And then I just wanna mention, thanks to Ross Moore Community Services District and the city of Seal Beach, who are continuing to contribute to our 4th of July event, so $8,000 each from, from both of them, so we really thank them.
Thank you so much. Okay, uh, we're gonna move to warrants, um, I'm gonna see if I can get a, uh, first and a second on the warrants.
I'll move.
Second.
Okay, uh, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Edgar?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Kusamoto?
Aye.
Councilmember Turco?
Aye.
Councilmember Hasselbrink?
Aye.
Councilmember Murphy?
Aye.
Good deal. Uh, next is the consent calendar, all consent calendars may be voted upon with one motion unless anybody wants to pull an item. Any of the councilmembers wanna pull an item?
No.
I'll move.
Second.
Okay, move a second, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So now we are, uh, on item 11A, Introduction of an Ordinance, 2018-04, Off-Street Parking Zoning Ordinance. Um, you know, and I, again, what I wanna do is, I just wanna explain, I, I realize that there is a really important item on this agenda. Uh, this item was something that, uh, we had actually put a moratorium in the city, stopped development, uh, people have a lot of money on the line on this, and I just wanna be sensitive that we make our way through this item and, uh, and be able to turn the machine back on if that's, uh, what we're gonna do, and, uh, get the planning department back in service here, so, uh, city manager, if I could ask for a staff report.
Thank you, mayor and city council, this, um, it's an introduction of an ordinance regarding off-street parking and zoning ordinance amendment, and this item was discussed, um, and deliberated by the Planning Commission, and is coming to the city council at this point, and I will have the Development Services Director, Stephen Mendoza, give the staff report, take any questions from there.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, most of the city's current off-street parking regulations were adopted years ago to suit the needs of a more suburban community. Parking behaviors are transitioning, more, more of the population have cars, uses cars for travel regularly, and needs storage for those cars. Like many cities, Los Alamos has not updated the off-street parking standards to reflect the current trends. On February 28th, the Planning Commission recommended that the city council amend the, the parking code, um, for off-street parking and guest parking requirements for new or expanded multifamily residential uses in both the R2, which is the residential area near Granol, and the R3 area, which is the area near City Hall, and then Apartment Row area. The commission will continue to work on other segments of the parking code, but they wanted to forward this item to you, all wrapped up, and this item, um, includes a new requirement for studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, three bedrooms, four bedrooms, and also guest parking ratio of .33 per, per unit. Um, as, as directed by the city council, the .33 is the same thing you put in your emergency moratorium. Again, the Planning Commission will keep, keep working on parking, but they wanted to get this segment of the parking code over to you, um, at this time. So the number of required spaces will be, if approved tonight, is one and one-half parking spaces for each studio unit, two parking spaces for each one-bedroom unit, two and three-quarters spaces for each two-bedroom unit, three and one-half spaces for each three-bedroom unit, four parking spaces for each four-bedroom unit, and then one-half additional space for each additional bedroom in excess of the first four bedrooms. And then a minimum of one unassigned designated space for a project that is four units or fewer, a minimum of .33 unassigned designated guest spaces per unit for a project that is five units or more, so that's covering the big projects. And they also redefined bedroom to provide staff with more of a definition to provide any applicants that come our way. With that, this is a public hearing, you would take any testimony regarding this item and open the public hearing, and then, um, you will direct the city attorney to read the ordinance as proposed.
Great, thank you. So, uh, as, uh, staff talked about, we're gonna go ahead and open up the, uh, public comment, uh, for this and, uh, record anybody, so anybody that has, uh, items pertaining to this issue, if you could, uh, address the council at this point if you would wish. I want to just give it a few more minutes, 'cause we've had a lot of people in the past, just, um, okay. So, uh, seeing none, we're gonna go ahead and close public comments, and, uh, city attorney, just as we kinda procedurally get ready, if you wouldn't mind reading the, uh, ordinance into the record?
Sure, thank you, mayor. Uh, before the city council this evening for consideration is ordinance number 2018-04, entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Los Alamos, California, Approving Zoning Ordinance Amendment 18-01 to Amend Section 17.26.040 and 17.76.020 of the Los Alamos Municipal Code to Modify Off-Street Parking and Guest Parking Requirements for New or Expanded Multiple Family Residential Uses in the R2 Limited Multiple Family and R3 Multiple Family Residential Zoning Districts and to Define Bedroom." Thank you.
Great. Now I'm gonna bring it back to the council, uh, for discussion. Uh, anybody on the council want to talk or ask questions, the staff on this item?
I guess, um, I'll go, so, um, city manager, uh, director, so this is consistent with the urgency ordinance, at least the one with requiring guests parking, is that how I'd understand this?
Uh, the, it is consistent, except for they did a threshold of four units or below, and then five units and above.
Okay.
The city council didn't do that split.
I got you, okay. And, uh, and then with respect to the definition of the bedroom, it's consistent with other, uh, I was saying, neighboring communities, uh, how?
Uh, it's a, it's a mixture of neighboring communities, they took six to seven different ordinances throughout Orange County that were having parking issues, and created that definition.
Okay, thank you, no other questions.
Great.
Sure, just a couple of questions. So, these numbers, are, are these on the high end compared to the local communities in terms of, uh, parking requirements for, um, uh, number of bedrooms, uh, you know, per number of bedroom?
Uh, they, they are conservative numbers, yeah, they're on the high end, no, I don't think so, because we're updating ours for the issues we're going through today, where other communities haven't updated their parking standards in years.
Okay. And what is the basis for these specific numbers? How do they arrive at these specific numbers? You know, one and a half parking space for each studio unit?
They use their practical experience and what works based on approving these multi-units over the last few years. We have a couple of commissioners that have been there as long as, um, one's been there about 15 years. So they've used their experience, used the ordinances of other cities, come together and created this recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Councilmember Murphy?
Sure. For comparison purposes, Stephen, could you go through the table and say where we are now?
Sure. Um, the definition that they provided is very specific. The definition that was already in our code is very general, and I'll read that to you. Two spaces for each, for, I'm sorry, two spaces for the first two bedrooms of each dwelling unit, plus half a space for each bedroom or other room that can be readily used as bedrooms in excess of the first two bedrooms, and then one parking space for each studio unit. That's the vagueness, and they've taken that vagueness and made it specific based on the unit size and bedroom size.
So for the minimum, the two-bedroom, they've raised it from two spaces to 2.75?
Correct.
Okay, and then follows along the way?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Hasselbrink? Yeah. Okay, um, we've heard, uh, everything, I would just say, is there a motion to, uh, approve this?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Anybody oppose? Okay, great. Okay. So, at this point, uh, now we have moved to item 12A, uh, which is the Introduction of Ordinance, 2018-03, adding ordinance or adding chapter 9.3 Constitution compliance. Um, what I wanna do is, uh, I'm gonna ask councilmember Kusamoto to, uh, talk a little bit about this and, uh, where he was at, but I, I wanna explain the process to you a little bit, because I think it's important that, uh, we have the context, uh, so that we can go through and have a really good discussion. Um, this is an item that is council-driven, which means that, uh, councilman, or Mayor Pro Tim Kusamoto had, uh, brought this item, uh, back in January, wanted to put it on the agenda, uh, we were getting ready to put it on the agenda in January for February, uh, ended up pulling it off and ended up putting it on tonight. Um, the councilmembers up here, uh, cannot meet outside of these chambers to talk about city business, so for us to be able to put something on the agenda, this gives councilmembers an opportunity to have an open discussion. The reason why we pulled the item back in February is because staff started doing staff work, and we felt that it wasn't, um, prudent to have, use taxpayer money to do work on an item until we know whether the rest of the council has any interest in, uh, hearing this, participating, or having anything to do with it. So, um, and then through this process, um, what would end up happening is that, uh, tonight, what we are not doing, uh, we are not, 'cause I've been getting a lot of email, so I just wanna clarify this, uh, we are not filing a lawsuit, uh, we, uh, are not determining immigration policy tonight. Um, we are going to listen to Mayor Pro Tim Kusamoto tell what the objectives were for putting this item together, uh, we're going to look at the, uh, item that was put in the agenda and the draft ordinance. Uh, tonight, one of three things can happen. We can get done with this, and it would be just a good discussion, and we would decide to take no action, but you would have some idea of where this council stands. Second item we could take is a resolution or action, and the resolution would be like we do with many other things in the city, where we take a position, put it on the letterhead, I would sign it, send it off to whatever the issue or legislation body would be, and it would state our position, it's non-binding. Uh, what is on the agenda tonight is the third scenario, which is, uh, an ordinance. Uh, Los Alamos is a charter city, and it means, under the state of California, uh, charter cities are allowed to make laws for their city, they're allowed to bring interpretation and declare what the laws are as they further refine them, and a lot of times, those laws end up being things that are terminations, like fees for Parks and Recreation, it would be traffic, uh, costs for the, uh, and for traffic enforcement, stuff like that. Uh, but this item is within the jurisdiction of the city council for us to have, and this ordinance would be one way of providing clarification for this issue. Uh, again, I just wanted to make sure that you're aware of what we're talking about, I want you to be aware that this is not something that is driven from staff, we aren't sitting up here going through, uh, the chief of police, or the city manager, or anybody else, this is something that the council wants to talk about tonight and see if we wanna take action. And with that introduction, I'm gonna turn this over to Mayor Pro Tim Kusamoto.
Thank you, mayor, and thank you for that, uh, you know, introduction and, and kinda the framing of this, so, um, to my colleagues, um, I've thought about this for quite some time, since the fall of last year when this was, looks like it was heading for, uh, enactment. And, uh, you know, in my heart, what it is, it's, I see a conflict between two governing documents, the Constitution of the United States and the state constitution itself, and again, as a charter city, we are here to try and, at least for our jurisdiction, so, and I know, I believe there are members of the public that are outside of here, and I appreciate you being here, but this is really the business of Los Alamos. And those of you that know the city, we have a, uh, military base over here, we have contractors that do business with the, uh, federal government, and I, I just feel that this body owes them some kind of certainty and guidance in this, uh, enacting this ordinance. And please understand, the ordinance is strictly to Los Al, it, it does not speak to other jurisdictions, it does not speak to what the state may or may not choose to do, and it really is for us to say, we, uh, believe in the constitution, and with that, this is, this is how I approach it. I, I'm an engineer by trade, we're not professional, uh, leaders up here, we're a community leader, we have constituents that are both residents that live here, uh, the people that come in here during the day to do, uh, their business, and the, uh, business owners, so how do we protect them when there's a law on the books in the state of California that says, if you comply with the federal law, that the Attorney General's gonna come in there and arrest us? Now that is not right to me. So how can we do that? And I, and I thought the best way to do it is a charter city, following the same example as the elected leaders in Sacramento have done, I'm doing the same thing with this council, I'm asking us to take the same kind of position. So with that said, now, we have this oath here, that we are here to uphold and support and defend the United States Constitution, so, that, in, in that, I am interpreting that So, that, in that, I am interpreting that to say, we can say, we're going to do that, and we're going to ignore this law that would cause business owners here to be arrested if the fed, federal, you know, immigration, whoever comes in and wants to audit them. And that is how I understand the state of California is interpreting the California Values Act. So, I did not call it the Los Alamos Value Act. I called it, you know, compliance with the U.S. Constitution, and that's what it is. I'm going to ask my colleagues here, you know, for their indulgence, that I think that this is important for us, for our city, for our community, and I'm looking forward to all the inputs from those that are part of our city as well as those that are outside. And I would ask that you would keep it civil, that you would get your points out there quickly. I write everything down, I listen, I've gotten several emails, and some of them made some very good points that oppose my position, and I take those in. I take those in seriously, because this is what I believe in. I am not so invested in this position that I cannot be changed, but I would ask that you make some persuasive arguments as to why this is not right for Los Alamos. And, you know, I'm looking to Los Alamos stakeholders to actually really come in there and make that. And I see my neighbors here, and I'm really interested to hear what they say, and I'm going to talk with them when I walk the dog next time, because we can have a longer discussion, and I really enjoy hearing their opposing view, and I'm looking forward to that. So, with that, Mayor, that's my report.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Protim Kusamoto. So, at this point, what I'm going to do is I'm going to open it up for public comment. As you had seen earlier, I'm going to try and get a little bit better control. But what I want to do is I just, basically, you get five minutes, and you get to say your piece.
Three.
Three minutes. So, the, yeah. So, I'm already losing control. So, I'm going to have the city clerk do, is she keeps track of this. We have a timer here, you'll see when it's getting yellow and red, and when it turns red, we would ask for you to stop. And then, at that point, we'll continue on. So, you know, we are here until people are no longer wanting to talk. So, we really appreciate your input. And with that, after all the last of the public comment, we're going to bring it back to the council, and then, you know, at that point, we're going to take this item up as a council and see where it goes. Thank you. So, first up.
Hello. My name is Emmy Madeline Chen. I'm 10 years old and a fifth grade student at Weaver Elementary. Public speaking makes me really nervous, but I have to speak out today. First of all, thank you for representing our city. Thank you for your dedication and service. I love Los Alamos. The city is my home. I was born in the Los Alamos Hospital. I've only attended Los Alamos schools, and will be starting at Oak Middle School in the fall. Ordinance 2018-03 will impact everyone, my neighbors, my classmates, and the diversity that represents our community. Right now in fifth grade, we are learning about our U.S. government. I've learned that the role of our government is to ensure the health and safety of its residents and community. The California Values Act was created to protect and honor California's immigrant community. We live in a state where the majority of our residents come from immigrant backgrounds, where their first language is not English, and my family is part of this. Their diversity makes our country, our state, and Los Alamos beautiful. The California Values Act ensures that schools, libraries, and hospitals are safe places. I can't understand why Los Alamos would want our city to be not safe. I don't want to see families separated or taken away at school sites, at the library, or at the hospital where I was born at. Thank you for serving as my representative. You speak on behalf of me and my family. Please vote no on this ordinance. Our tax money should not be going to this. There are so many needs in our community, money for schools, for parks, and for those in need. Please make Los Alamos a safe place to live for all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there.
Hi. My name is Leah Tercios, and I'm a sixth grader at Oak Middle School. My grandparents moved to this city in the 90s, and this is the only city I know. I have attended Los Al schools since preschool. It is a nice place to live. All my best friends are from different backgrounds, which makes us a diverse group of kids. Thank you for letting me speak today. I'm usually very scared and shy to talk to new people, but today, I feel like I have to speak about this. I want everyone in Los Al to feel as safe as I do, when I'm at school, at the park, in my home, and everywhere in this great city. The California Values Act is supposed to make everyone feel safe in schools, libraries, and hospitals. Why should any family have to worry about being separated just taking their child to school, or taking a sick family member to the hospital? Why don't we try and spend more tax money on schools or safer streets? I watch kids cross the street without looking every day, and after school. Kids and after-school cars speed down the street every day, too. Why aren't there more police officers or speed bumps being put in? Every child in Los Alamos deserves to be and feel safe. Thank you for listening to me, and please continue to make Los Al a safe place to live.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for letting us speak. My husband and I are happy and proud residents of Los Alamos for 40, more than 48 years. I am here to speak about the California Values Act, the sanctuary state bill. The city should not exempt itself from this law. Exemption is a politically charged move that does not reflect all the Los Alamos residents. Voting for, voting to exempt Los Al could also lead to litigation. This state law has already been legally challenged by the federal government. Los Alamos does not need to spend taxpayers' money on a lawsuit. Council members state that they want to support the Constitution, but what about the federal mandates that have been immoral, such as the rounding up of the Japanese people during World War II, incarcerating them, and seizing their property? Another example is the mass deportation of Mexicans and Mexican-Americans to Mexico in the 1930s. Up to 2 million were deported, half of them were U.S. citizens. With this new act, criminals will not be running free. The public's safety will still be protected, while families living in fear will also be protected. This act won't stop ICE. On a side note, as I read about ICE rounding up the suspected illegal immigrants with common surnames, many are law-abiding citizens, and it reminds me of Nazi Germany, when Jewish people were ripped from their homes and placed in concentration camps. Our immigrants should not have to live in fear. Please do not exempt the city from the California Values Act. It would be a step back to inhumane laws and practices. And my husband just wanted to share a quotation of thought. Thanks.
I thought it would be wise for all of us to reflect upon the words of Martin Niemeyer, which are in the U.S. Holocaust Memorial Museum. First, they came for the socialists, and I did not speak out, because I was not a socialist. Then they came for the trade unionists, and I did not speak out, because I'm not a trade unionist. Then they came for the Jews, and I did not speak out, because I am not a Jew. Then they came for me, and there was no one left to speak for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor.
Councilmembers.
My name is Cynthia Valencia, and I'm an organizer for the ACLU of Southern California. Earlier this morning, you received a letter from our attorneys in addition to the National Day Labor Organizing Network and the Asian Law Caucus, outlining while this ordinance is unlawful and a blatant violation of the city's legal obligation to follow the California Values Act and state law. This is also an offensive endorsement of the Trump administration's racist and anti-immigrant agenda. The city must follow all state law, even if you don't agree with it. If you decide to move forward with this ordinance, you are subjecting the city of Los Alamos at taxpayers' expense to lawsuits. The attorney general's office can and will impose fines, and civil rights organizations will have motivation to file lawsuits that the taxpayers in Los Alamos will have to pay. There is absolutely no language, any legal reasoning, in this ordinance that says why the council believes that SB 54 is inconsistent with the U.S. Constitution or any federal laws. California has the authority, under the 10th Amendment, to ensure that state and local resources are not used to enforce federal immigration laws. The California Values Act does not say anywhere that ICE or the federal government cannot enforce immigration law. What the California Values Act does say is that state and local resources, which the state of California does have authority over, cannot be used to be part of the deportation machine. It is not the law, it is not the job of local law enforcement officers to work for the federal government, and the federal government cannot force a state to use their law enforcement to enforce federal law. Another reasoning that was brought up in this ordinance was the lawsuit brought forward by Jeff Sessions, which we believe and know has no legal merit, and only challenges three provisions in the law. So, as people mentioned earlier, that the California Values Act makes safe zones in schools, hospitals, courthouses, vulnerable places. You want, or the city council in this ordinance wants to remove that safety for everyone, even though there are only three provisions in the United States lawsuit that are being questioned. So, the rest of the California Values Act, regardless of where the lawsuit goes, would still be in effect. So, lawfully, the city cannot go through with this ordinance. Also, let's see, so, and then the last point that I want to make is it's extremely disappointing and unfortunate that the city of Los Alamos is sending a clear message to immigrant communities that they do not want to protect them, and instead are going to support the Trump administration's racist and anti-immigrant agenda. And if the city chooses to move forward with this and just make a statement as to how they feel about the California's Act, then civil rights organizations will likely have to continue doing PRA requests to make sure that they are in compliance with the law. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Ricky Holsey. I live in Westminster, so we're neighbors. I just want to thank you for actually being the first city to have the gumption to challenge this. I also am a, you know, being a California resident, I do believe that it should be illegal, again, this isn't an immigration deal. This is illegal immigration. I saw your rugby team. You're definitely not against immigration, diverse, diverse nationalities, which is wonderful. I live in Westminster, which we know is primarily Vietnamese, and I love my neighbors, the legal neighbors. But I've also had neighbors where they've brought in illegals, where they're sleeping on hammocks in the back, fire hazards, pooping in holes in the backyard, and the immigration has come in and tearing down things, because that is unsafe. But anyway, that's just my city. But I look at it in this way, you know, everybody's talking about the resources and that, but what about the resources of us taxpayers? I feel like this is no different than a father coming home, taking his paycheck, handing it to the neighbors, and taking care of all them, the illegal costs, the fire, I mean, the police departments, the jurisdictions, the criminal courts, and that stuff that we have to pay for. And so, that check that that father brings home is basically going and paying for other things, and the families are being neglected. That's money that could be going into our pockets to provide for our families. So, I'm a firm believer that I think that the illegals, not immigrants, but the illegals should be not accepted. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Where do I start? California has gotten rogue. The politicians here, the Democrats, have gone rogue. We have no hate, we have no fear. It's legal immigration that's welcome here, straight out. What would happen to me if I was to harbor an illegal? I'd be put in jail, I'd get arrested. So, why is it that Governor Brown, De Leon can get away with all of this? They are in violation of harboring subsection 1324A1A, a federal offense. They need to be arrested, and they should be in jail. Trump is building that wall for the love of America, to keep the drugs out and keep illegals out. I was born in Mexico, I came here legally, my parents came here legally, and that's how it should be done. If we can't vet you, we don't want you. We don't know who you are, we don't know if you're a criminal, we don't know if you're a rapist. Trump is right in that way, because not everybody's a good guy. And I know plenty of illegals that are good, and I know plenty of illegals that are not really good. They're drug addicts, they do robberies, they own guns. This has to change, but it's a bigger agenda here. The bigger agenda here is to, the war is on the middle-income family. In order for socialism and communism to exist in the United States of California, you need to get rid of the middle-class family, and that's what the Democratic Party is doing. They have been taken over by the Communist Party for over 30 years. That's exactly what they're doing in California, because our taxes are the highest, we, our gas tax is killing me. I do a lot of driving, and that is killing me right now. The registration just went up, we have the most homeless here, we have, it's brutal here. We need to get out and vote, people, because the Democratic Party is killing California. Arrest Governor Brown and De Leon, they are criminals.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi. I couldn't be any more excited to be here. We feel the forgotten California citizens that are against illegal aliens coming to our country and not doing the right thing, we feel like we finally have someone that's ready to actually support the citizens of not only the city of Los Alamos, but California. What these, good-intentioned people forget is that we fought a revolutionary war in order to be free from a country so that we could actually be self-governing. And that self-governance is in the form of the law of the land called the Constitution. And every single public servant serves under that Constitution. And I thank you so much for actually acknowledging that. You, to me, are the pioneers of the revolution, the revolution that fought for America, that fought for the citizens of this country, that fought for what our values are. And I look at each and every one of you, and that is the brave people up there, because that is not the popular. You see these cute little kids, and I love that they were brave enough to come out here, but they missed a very, very vital point. We have a Constitution. We have the law of the land, and that Constitution says that the federal government is in charge of immigration law, not the state of California. The federal government is in charge, and you are sitting here saying, yes, we actually have a law of the land, it's called the Constitution. And Governor Brown, Becerra, and De Leon don't get to fix that or change that. Our federal government decides on who comes in and out of our country. And for this state to have the nerve to have laws in complete violation of that Constitution that people died, that walked with no shoes at Valley Forge, blood on their feet, to make sure that we were a sovereign country, and to completely dismiss that is unthinkable. So, thank you, Jeff Sessions, for coming here and exposing the unlawful behavior that's happening in Sacramento against the citizens of not only California, but of America. And I am so grateful to each and every one of you. You, to me, are the pioneers of this state. You will now go down in history, and I pray to God that you keep this, in God we trust, that you stay strong against what we need to do, which is the right thing for our citizens and for our country. God bless Trump, God bless America, and God bless each one of you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, and thanks for the opportunity of hearing from all of us. We've heard a lot about a lot of things. People have been called racist, anti-immigrant, all kinds of smears. You know, we don't hear California called anymore. We don't hear called the Golden State. Do you ever hear the expression, "California dreaming"? Not anymore. I came here in approximately 1980 from Pennsylvania. I wanted to come to the Golden State, California dreaming, as I'm sure a lot of other people have. But you know what? We've got more U-Hauls now going out of California than going into California. People don't call us the Golden State. They joke about us, they mock us as a sanctuary state, temporarily. Fortunately for people like you, who do understand your oath of office and do understand the Constitution, and what is one of the number-one things? Who is guarding this building today? Police, okay? Do we want to tie the hands of the police? Do we want to limit communication and coordination between federal law enforcement and local law enforcement? Do we want people that are sitting in jails that the feds know something about and want to have an ICE detainer hold on them, but have a local municipality or police department not cooperate? I know Kate Steinle is famous. There's Jamil Shaw. Jamil Shaw was a young boy in LA. He's just one of thousands. His killer killed him 24 hours after being released, an early release, and there was an ICE detainer hold, and it wasn't an ICE detainer hold, and it wasn't honored by Los Angeles, okay? Anyone can cherry-pick examples, I'm sure we can, but we all know that that's just one of them. And there's also Dom Durden, I mean, we can go down the list. The point is, you have an oath of office and you want to protect the citizens. Why on earth would we want to violate federal law, violate the Constitution, and tie the hands of law enforcement? Nobody's anti-immigration, no one's anti-immigration, okay? And for people that are outside, trust me, trust the other people here, we don't have hate in our heart. But if there's somebody in a local jail that the feds know something about, and they can coordinate and communicate with the local law officials, I think that's a good thing, and I think most people do too. And it does go beyond that with some employers and some other, you know, municipal stuff. SB 54 is a little thing. But I agree with the lady, California has gone rogue, California is not the Golden State, no one's California dreaming, and we're the joke of the nation because we're the sanctuary state, okay? We do have a candidate running for Senate named Erin Cruz. She's trying to take on Feinstein, and so don't give up hope, I'm not just depressed. We have hope, Erin Cruz can turn the state around.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Council. My name is Stephanie Tevez, and I am a resident of Los Alamitos. And I would ask that Council ask everyone that speak if they are a resident, as this is a Los Alamitos issue. I've lived in Los Alamitos since Oak reopened back in 1996, and I'm a graduate of Los Al High School. My family moved and was stationed here at Los Alamitos Armed Forces Base with the idea that we would leave in three years. We fell in love with Los Alamitos. My mother ended up retiring from her military career here, and my brother ended up joining the military as well after graduating from Los Al High School. And we are very proud in our family and many veterans, and we're proud to be American. Our family has spent over 20 years here, and I'm a special education teacher here, and my first teaching position was at McGaw Elementary School. Both my children attend Los Alamitos schools, so when I say we love Los Al, I truly mean that wholeheartedly. As a resident and as a parent, I am concerned how we plan on spending tax dollars. As a sovereign state, California has the authority, under the Tenth Amendment of the U.S. Constitution, to allocate its limited state resources to priorities that ensure the health and safety of its residents and communities. If the city council truly believes the California Values Act is unconstitutional, the proper course would be to seek a court ruling. Because they know it will not win in court, they have opted to cost the city resources by making a politically self-serving statement. This process is not logical for such a small city. Roughly 12,000 residents live in Los Alamitos. Immigration fed versus local government is a much larger issue, and that should be fought by a much larger and well-funded participant group. SB 54 is a reflection of our values in California. Enforcing federal immigration laws that fuel mass deportation, separate families, and spread fear through immigrant communities are not among our values. The administration's justification for the anti-immigrant agenda is ungrounded. Targeting immigrants to reduce crime is a misled policy. Extensive research has shown that immigrants are less prone to crime than our native-born Americans. In the U.S. today, there are more than nine million children whose parents are undocumented immigrants and 16.6 million families with mixed status. This is a human rights issue that can be led to immense emotional, can lead to emotional harm, as well as severe negative economic impact. Deportation leaves many children with undocumented parents in foster care. Undocumented individuals targeted are often male, leaving a large number of single mothers struggling to make ends meet after the deportation of their husbands. Many children and their parents are living in constant fear of separation. I urge you to vote no.
Great, thank you.
Hello, Council members, thank you very much for, for doing this. My name is Elsa Aldiger, and I'm here representing the Latinos for Trump and also Make California Great Again. And I'm speaking on behalf of the legal Latino community. The legal Latino community is being left behind. My mom, she's a simple woman, she's a housekeeper. She has to fight for her job. And they said the jobs that nobody wants, right? And she's fighting all the time because there's other people doing the same job that she does for a lot less money. Not only that, in the community of where I live, there's a lot of people that are illegal, they get in trouble, and then the next day I see them there again. Why? Because sanctuary cities are protecting illegal criminals. We have to, please, I beg all of you, we have to do what is right. We cannot think with our heart, we have to think with our head. And if we really think about it, these people, Jerry Brown, Kevin De Leon, the Democrats, are putting illegals before the American people. So as an American, I beg all of you to do what is right. And when you took your job, you, I'm sure that you did it for the right reasons, which is do what is right for your communities. So please, when you vote tonight, think about my mother, think about someone like me, that we have to struggle every day to find a job. And we're not, you know, we're not fighting for those jobs that are $25 or $40. We're, you know, like, I make $16, $17 an hour, and people that come here illegally do the same thing for $10 under the table. It's not fair, it's not fair. So please, just think about it. Illegal is illegal. Tonight, when you do the vote, just think about it. Legal, illegal. Please, God bless you guys, and thank you so much, and I'm hoping and praying that this is the first city. And I'm hoping and praying that other cities will wake up and put the American people first. We need to put the American agenda first. It has nothing to do with color, I'm brown, I'm from El Salvador, it has nothing to do with immigration. It has to do with legal and illegal. That's it, thank you very much.
My name's Greg Siska. I disagree with you respectfully, Mr. Kuzamoto, about how being outside your city doesn't affect me. It does affect me. Your policy of allowing criminals loose out into our communities, they don't just stay in your community, they drive to my community. So you need to be aware that you're affecting my safety unless you vote yes on this. Now, everybody's talking about SB 54 being okay, it's not. I don't know if you're aware or not, these children ought to be aware, since they're being used by their parents in a ridiculous parental fashion. I would, I would take these parents and send them somewhere else so that they can change what's going on with their thinking about how their children should be involved in politics. But SB 54, Board of Education, LA City Council, LA City Board of Education appointed an ad-hoc committee to explain the effects of SB 54. What are they expect, the effects? Well, there were six recommendations by this appointed ad-hoc committee of five people. They came up with six recommendations. The first one is that we do not honor the federal detainers. And the communication from your ACLU representative here, it was very clear what Kevin De Leon says. He says, "We're not going to spend any money on helping get rid of deportable criminals in our jail systems," which happens to be 40% of criminals who are deportable when they get done doing their crime. But this ad-hoc committee said that we're going to remove ICE from our jails, we're going to remove the computer, we're going to remove the desk that's inside the jail, we're going to remove the support staff. Anybody who calls ICE and says, "Hey, come get this criminal, he's coming out of jail now," will be eliminated. The support staff is going to be eliminated. Six points, all six points break the law. It's a lawless law. They break the Federal Communications Act. That's the law they're breaking. They're not allowed to break that law because it's a handshake between the state and the federal government to control the deportable criminals in our society. That's called the Federal Communication Act. When SB 54 goes into effect, they want to stop talking to each other from the federal level to the sheriff's level, that's a violation of that law. And I respect you guys, I love that you guys are doing this. Please be the first city to come out and stand for, against sanctuary policies. They are criminal behavior, it's lawlessness, and these are, we're talking about undocumented, illegal people, Korean nationals in our society. Let's get rid of these criminals, all right? Help us get rid of these people. Let's remember, they cost money to keep them in jail. Thank you very much. Good work, guys, good work.
Good evening.
Good evening. I am a community member, and I would like to reiterate a point that was already made today. This administration's justification for the anti-immigrant agenda is ungrounded. Targeting immigrants to reduce crime is a misled policy. Extensive research has shown that immigrants are less prone to crime than our native-born Americans. This ordinance will only fuel hate, bigotry, and racism. And I would like you to think of the students that have to be exposed to this violence in this community in K through 12, because we do have parents that are immigrants in this community, and these children will be affected. And so this ordinance will only fuel racism, bigotry, and hate. I've seen it as I've sat here for over an hour, the violence that I've been exposed to as a person of color is really triggering and traumatizing. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hi.
Hi there.
Hi. I'm a member of this community as well. I recently graduated from the high school. I've been educated here my whole life, and I just want you to know that you guys are my elected officials, and you do not represent me by passing this ordinance. And I want you to know that if you pass this, we will all remember this in this room. We will remember this administration, we will remember our senators, we will remember you guys. And I just want you to quote one of our presidents who was a relative of immigrants. "Immigration policy should be generous, it should be fair, it should be flexible. With such a policy, we can turn to the world and to our own past with clean hands and clear conscience." John F. Kennedy. And I ask you, if you pass this ordinance, will you have a clear conscience? Will you be able to sleep at night knowing what you've done to communities in this entire city? And I think that you know the answer to that is no. And so I'm asking you to vote no on this ordinance and keep SB 54 allowed in this city. And I just want to remind you that it takes around 3,000 votes to vote a member onto city council, and I will get 3,000 votes for all of you, okay? This is not okay. So, thank you and vote no.
Thank you. Good evening. Hi there.
Hello, I live in Long Beach, just a mere 10-minute drive from here. I live on Stearns and Pallaverti. And if you could build a big, beautiful wall along the 605, even though that would inconvenience me tremendously, I would give you a thumbs up. Because what you need to do is, you need to protect your community. Long Beach City Council has lost its way. It's forgotten that they're there to represent the citizens of Long Beach, not the illegal aliens. What a lot of people don't realize is that when there's, when a city police department does not recognize detainers, a lot of criminal illegal aliens can be let out on bail. When they're let out, it's very easy for them to disappear. So not following federal immigration law has a huge impact on the safety of your community. And I would like us to stop, or not us, but the opposition to stop trying to change the language. It's not immigrants we're talking about. We're talking about illegal immigrants, illegal aliens. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
I'm Robert Loughton. This, this issue is, is pretty simple. Less ICE in jails means more ICE raids in communities. There should be more cooperation between different police departments and sheriff's departments and ICE. Because ICE, Immigration and Customs Enforcement, they're only interested in the illegal alien that committed a serious crime. So if an illegal alien doesn't want to get deported, then, then, then there's a list of crimes that they should not commit. Okay, also, when you cooperate with ICE, you're reimbursed, and, and that's going to help you on your budget deficit. Oh, and as far, and there's, there's studies at the Center for Immigration Studies, CIS.org, that documents that immigrants are more likely to be on welfare, and that illegal aliens commit a higher percentage of crimes than the, than the citizens. And, and I've been to a lot of, a lot of immigration, open border rallies, and the sign that they, I often see is no borders, no nation, no deportation. That's what they're all about. They are the ultimate globalist when you say no borders, no nations. Nations should have borders and immigration laws. And so I think that's all I will have to say.
Great, thank you.
So I'm, I'm definitely in favor of this resolution.
Thank you. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Vaughn Beck, and here's somebody I think we should always remember, and that's Kate Steinle. I think you know where, what happened to her, murdered by an illegal alien on a pier with her father. Just, just remember that, folks.
Yeah, you might want to move up.
Just remember that, folks. Kate Steinle was murdered by an illegal alien, okay? Thank you. Okay. Sanctuary cities breed disrespect for the rule of law when the police of all people are told by politicians running the cities to look the other way at illegal aliens. What kind of message does that send? If elected officials pretending to be leaders can turn their backs on laws they dislike. Number two, sanctuary cities burden and endanger the police. Three, sanctuary cities promote crime and thus jeopardize our citizens. Sanctuary cities pose impo, cost on their residents. Sanctuary cities facilitate and encourage illegal aliens, and they're aliens, not immigrants, illegal aliens. They are unfair to legal immigrants who waited in line, followed the rules, and showed respect for the rule of law. As a result of this porous borders, what do we have? We have MS-13 gangs, arsonists, drug trafficking, human trafficking, and murders. And some of the victims are 18-month-old infants to 90-plus-year-old senior citizens. And in closing, I want to thank Jeff Sessions, Attorney General, Thomas Holman, the ICE Director, and God bless USA, and Donald John Trump.
Good evening, Art.
Good evening. My name is Art DeBolt, I'm a resident of Los Alamitos, and sat up there many years ago, and in a way envy you, in a way I don't. But I would just like to say this, I'd like just to thank you all for the courage, especially for Councilman Kuzamoto to, to put this on the agenda, and for all, and for all, and for it being on the agenda. I've often heard, you know, we need to have a conversation, we need to have a conversation. Well, the conversation's happening, and it's starting, and it has to start somewhere. And I'd like to just, I made a comment to the press, got referred to as a local activist. I, I don't consider myself an activist, I'm just a resident who cares about his community. And I would just like to say that you all take the same oath, everybody who's been in elected office. The President of the United States took essentially the same oath, the governor of the state of California takes the same oath, each representative, senator, and legislator in Sacramento take the same oath, all the way down to county supervisor and to you as city councilmen, and even to the appointed people here in the city, in different cities. They all take the same oath. And that oath contains the duty to protect and defend the Constitution. And that oath contains the duty to protect and defend the Constitution of the United States. That is a sacred promise that's been made to each and every citizen that you represent, that the president represents, that the governor represents, that the state legislatures represent. They all took that same oath and have that same promise. And because one body chooses to violate that oath, does not confer on them the authority to bully other elected officials into violating their oath. And I think that's what this is all about. We have one group duly elected who all took, they represent us. We're all part of this state as well. Whether we voted for them or not, they represent us as well. And they all took the same oath. And what joins us together, California is part of the union, we're part of the United States, and the law of the land is the Constitution of the United States. And therefore, you know, that they choose to violate it, that's their choice. That's their choice. But please, don't exercise whatever authority you have to bully somebody else. That's basically all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Hi there.
Hello. I'll be honest, I did not plan to speak today. However, there's a large number of Los Alamo families, I am a Los Alamo family. My children grew up here, they go to school here, and they're outside and they can't come in because there's not a seat for them. So they've asked me on behalf of Weaver families to speak out. They've stated explicitly that they were not aware of this ordinance, that this surprised them greatly when they found out and read in the newspaper on Sunday. We, as a community, were surprised and been doing research, trying to make sense of this, right? I know that what we have stated, and my hands are shaking, I am, it's unrehearsed, it's true, live, raw Los Alamo families. And what we have looked into is this understanding that we, the ordinance states that the city has a legal obligation to respect the Constitution. And I completely agree with that. However, I think it's important to look and for us to understand, and for the council to explain explicitly, how does the California Value Act is actually inconsistent with the U.S. Constitution. It has not been stated yet. What we know is, within the Tenth Amendment of the U.S. Constitution, it states that as a sovereign state, states have the authority within the U.S. Constitution to allocate its limited state resources to the priorities that ensure the health and safety of its resident and communities. It is stated within that, within our Tenth Amendment. We are aware and understand that within this case, that if Los Alamos is to pass this ordinance, because it is in violation of California state law, it will cause a litigation. Talking to immigration lawyers and asking around as Los Alamos residents, we've been trying to make sense of this. If this goes into court, it would impact the taxpaying funding. So we're not even talking about documentation, illegal immigration, we're talking about how you, as a representative of Los Alamos, are going to use our taxpayer funding. And I think that's important for us to consider, that we are a community of 12,000. How many criminals do we really have here, realistically? Okay, us living here, my children growing up here, for us to consider the ramifications of what's going on, and what that means for our city, how that represents our city, and how you want to spend your funding. I think it's important, I understand that you're hearing a lot of voices, but I think it's important that you have time to consider the voices you can't hear because they can't get in, and to really listen closely, looking at your emails, sending out, and getting a survey petition from the community, because your job is true. You not only represent California, but you've been elected to represent us, our voices.
Thank you.
Good evening, Los Alamo City Council. Again, my name is Arthur Shopper. I am a member of We the People Rising. I am a resident of Torrance, California. I welcome the announcement and the courage of this city council, their decision to override Senate Bill 54, the so-called sanctuary state law, which in fact is a piece of outlaw legislation, if anything else. The United States, your decision is not nullification but a restoration of the rule of law in our state and our country. The United States fought a civil war 150 years ago, which affirmed that the United States' Constitution is indeed the supreme law of the land. Article 6, Section 2 declares, "This Constitution and the laws of the United States, which shall be made in pursuance thereof, and all treaties made, or which shall be made under the authority of the United States, shall be the supreme law of the land. And the judges in every state shall be bound thereby, anything in the Constitution or laws or any state to the contrary notwithstanding." The legislature is out of control, and so is the judiciary, by the way. So you will have more credibility than all of them. Yes, I hear a lot about the Tenth Amendment. It is abused and ignored, but it does not apply to immigration, which fully belongs to the purview of the federal government. This action is a much-needed remedy against the lawlessness of the Sacramento political class, as well as the brown Nazis who want to steal this land and make it Mexico. The United States won the Mexican-American War from 46 to 48. The country purchased the land for 40 million U.S. dollars. Calculated today, that's about a billion, a billion dollars. As much as the brown bigots outside don't want to hear the truth, Mexican nationals during the Mexican-American War wanted to become Americans, and they begged for the American president to annex the entire country into the United States. The American Civil War was not a simple conflict between North and South, but even within the South, pro-union and anti-slavery forces seceded from the Confederacy and reasserted their commitments to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. West Virginia refused to secede and became a state of its own. Eastern Tennessee almost broke away. And there were free cities which emerged throughout the South, refusing to recognize the slaveocracy and the corruption of the Democrats in Sacramento, I mean, I'm sorry, in Virginia. Seems like we're reliving this all over again. They didn't get the message, they lost. It is a shame that California's elected officials put illegals ahead of Americans. From Kate Steinle to Reuben Morfin, Dominic Durden, Brendan Mendoza, Marcello Bizzarello, and the average of 25 Americans a day killed by illegals. It's time for We the People to take back our state and make sure that those lives were not lost in vain. This is your time. You have not just the opportunity, but an obligation to reject Senate Bill 54. I am urging you to do this, and as I have urged my own city to do the same.
Thank you, sir.
It is unconstitutional, and it's good for you to reassert the authority of our Constitution.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. My name is Luz Beltran Acevedo, and I am a Mexican-American. I recently moved to this great city because you have a great school district. I have two daughters, and because it resounds Los Alamitos, it makes me feel like I'm part of this land. I've been here in California 25 years. I have two daughters, and I research a lot of schools. And my daughters, they recently go to Weaver schools. Today, I was driving to work, and I heard the news that you guys were about to pass this ordinance. And at the same time, I received an email from that school telling us that this week is the week of compassion, responsibility, empathy, and support. Because this is what this great district is teaching our kids. And that's why I want to thank the city of Los Alamitos for that. But at the same time, how can I explain to my daughters, if you pass this ordinance, how can I explain to my daughters that I'm going to be scared that my family members are going to come to my house, and my neighbors can call the immigration? Do you think it's fair? I just ask you to reconsider this. I'm a real mom, nobody paid me. I live here. I live in Saratoga, I go to, my kids go to Weaver. And it took me two years to be able to move here and research the best school for my kids, because I believe that every kid deserves the best. And I'm talking to you from the bottom of my heart, because I don't want to be scared walking on Catala, going to the great bakery that we have, and be scared that my neighbors aren't going to be looking at me, because I'm Mexican-American. My husband is a Mexican-American too. He served in Afghanistan war. And he's taking care of my kids right now, and I'm here speaking out, because I don't want my two daughters to be afraid of walking on our streets on Los Alamitos. So please reconsider your decision, and please vote no for this. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Wow. I came to talk about the Parks and Rec and the budget. I don't know what else happened.
Well, if you wait long enough.
My name is Pedro Carvajal. The last time I stood here and introduced myself as Pedro Carvajal, it was after our city was kind of made a, you know, a national media phenomenon, because it's something that one of our elected officials did. And I felt that it was, at that point, my duty to come out and speak to the importance of what it is to be an immigrant living in Orange County, the son of an immigrant. I'm also a proud veteran of the United States Air Force. So I would appreciate that you give me that respect. I served the country, I wore the flag on my shoulder for many years. And so, this isn't directed to the crowd outside on both sides of this issue, this is directed at you guys. Why? Why now? Why are you dragging Los Alamitos into this partisan fiasco that you've created outside? Why now? Excuse me, you've spoken, right?
Hey, Pete, Pete, address us, okay?
Here's the issue, why now? I'm wondering, is there something bigger here? Do we have a councilman that has bigger political aspirations and wants this as his, basically, stepping stone to something else? This is not helpful to the city of Los Alamitos. This is actually irresponsible what you're doing. And you're going to stand here and tell me it's about the Constitution, about the United States, states versus the national Constitution? That's what you're going to tell me? The state of California goes against the national law all the time. Why this one? I didn't see you, when we led, the state-led proponents for like gay marriage against what the national law was saying, before the Supreme Court decided it was unconstitutional, nobody here came out and argued that the state was wrong. When the state legalized marijuana, you know, against the federal marijuana laws, nobody here stood here and started banging about the Constitution. Why is it the immigration issue that is now the situation? So is the marijuana law, so is everything else. I would appreciate if people that would like, let me finish, okay? Why? Nobody up there is constitutional, I know all of you, I don't think any of you are constitutional scholars. This law will be fought in the courts. It's not for the city of Los Al... Let the courts decide. The federal, Jeff Sessions, the Attorney General, filed lawsuit against the state of California. But yet, we feel that it's important to jump ahead of them. Lastly, I want you to turn around and look at that proud logo of the city of Los Alamitos. Look at that logo. There are two flags on there.
Thank you, Pete.
In addition to the American flag.
Thank you.
The Mexican flag, and the Spanish flag. Don't forget where we came from.
Thank you. Hi there. How are you doing this evening?
Hi, my name is Toni West. I'm a resident of Los Alamos. I've been a resident since 1988. I've actually grown up in this community since 1962. And I'm here to say I support all of you, and your decision, whichever way it may go. But I want to say that illegal immigration has nothing to do with Mexican-Americans, or Chinese, or Vietnamese. There's many, you know, California's a melting pot. I'm actually half Hawaiian, half Caucasian. So my mother came here when Hawaii was still a, not a state. And she had to show her immigration papers and go through that whole process, right? This is not a victimless, illegal immigration is not victimless. I've been in healthcare for the last 30 years. I have delivered more children that their families came here for the sole purpose of delivering their children so they could be American citizens, okay? The sole purpose. We paid for their healthcare 100%, okay? They didn't have to pay a dime. And those children are now allowed to have the full benefits of being American citizens. So they come and they deliver, and then they fly home, okay? There's many, I could tell you, Chinese, Vietnamese, Mexican, all over other parts of the world. It's not victimless. Somebody pays for that. It's not a free service that people think that it's free, and there's consequences. I just had to write off a bill, right, that was $200,000, by something that was mandated by the state of California, that we, if they, if this child tests for a certain disease, then they're required to have certain testing. Well, in China, this medication is not something that America uses, so we have no knowledge of it. And so this person got testing that costs a lot of money, that's mandated by the state of California, right? And then it was used against us. And then we had to forfeit that bill. So it's things like this that happen every day, that many people are not aware of, but I am, and I believe that what you're doing, somebody has to be strong, somebody has to set precedent. And if it's the little town of Los Alamitos, so be it. And so, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you. Hi there.
Hi there. I'm Linda Fine, and I am a resident of Los Alamitos. And I have been for over 30 years. My children went to Los Alamos High Schools, and middle schools, grade schools. I actually taught at the high school. And I am saddened by this, unfortunately. I do applaud anybody who takes on the job of managing the city. I know sometimes it can be a thankless job. However, I don't think that this ordinance is doing Los Alamitos any good. Actually, just proposing the ordinance has brought us into the limelight that I don't think we wanted. At this point, it's a double-edged sword. No matter what we do, at this point, it's not going to be good. We have media out there, there are tons of people who don't live in Los Alamitos, who seem to be afraid of what's going to happen in their communities. But this is my community, and I don't think that we should be doing this. I think that if it's going to be legal, it should be legal between the state of California and the federal government. I do not think that we should be getting into this fight financially, or just doing this to our community. It's already ripping our own community apart, and it's bringing people from the outside into our community, one way or the other. And I just don't think that it's a good thing. I would hope that you would vote no, and we could get out of this quickly. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Good evening.
Evening. Councilman Warren, do you want to talk about bullying? What do you call about ripping a mother away from her children in San Diego? What do you call abducting loved ones? What do you call rounding up Japanese for internment camps? That's bullying. The California Values Act protects us from bullying. Shut the hell up! Shut the hell up! SB 54 does not shelter felons. ICE, I mean, ICE automatically gets the fingerprints of anyone who gets fucked. Under SB 54, our prison system will inform ICE about release dates for dangerous felons. And sheriffs will also give ICE the heads up when violent felons will be released. But the thing is, this administration has a very loose definition of what a criminal is. So what SB 54 does is make sure this is stop illegally detaining innocent people, people who are not dangerous criminals. And it's gonna get our police, our local police, out of the business of assisting a federal agency. I mean, come on, do you think every city has the resources to help a federal agency? Anyways, um, you wanna, if you wanna hear another example, city of Cudahy, they lowered their crime rate when they became a sanctuary city because people felt more comfortable talking to the police. They felt more comfortable cooperating with law enforcement. I see this, I see the opposite happening if you pass this ordinance. I see, I see this city getting, getting a bad reputation. It also makes me wonder, how much money do you have, do you, how much money do you have in your reserves? Do you have money to burn? Because you're gonna face lawsuits if you, if you pass this ordinance. You, so do you wanna put, do you wanna put your residents through this? Ask yourself that. You wanna put your residents through this? Do you wanna, do you want, is this how you wanna spend the public money? I don't, I don't think so. So it's not, definitely not a good, it's definitely not, not a good idea to vote for this ordinance. You, if you really, you really want to handle this, take it to the courts. Don't take it to the people. Don't, don't take it to this council, don't take it to this council chamber. Shut the hell up!
Hey you guys. Hey, stay, stay focused and everybody, give her some respect. Let's, let's clear her out, okay? Let's hear.
So again, vote no on this ordinance. Oh, and these people here, they're professional trolls, okay? We've dealt with them everywhere.
So keep your comments to us, please. Thank you. I appreciate it.
They have gone everywhere. They have harassed communities of color. They have pepper sprayed kids. They have drawn a gun out on innocent people. These are not the people you need to listen to.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Thank you. Hi there. How you doing this evening?
My name is Robin Vittston. And I'm the California Director for We the People Rising and the Remembrance Project. And we are here to say that we endorse this ordinance. It is a common sense approach to the issue. And the topic has made worldwide news. But today on the John and Kent Show, I thought I heard a very good analysis of what the issue is. And that is this. The state is asking cities to break federal law. It's that simple. And this ordinance seems like it's a common sense measure to address the issue for municipalities. And we endorse the ordinance and we hope that a revolution starts here tonight, that other cities, municipalities, and counties throughout our state will follow the lead. As to litigation, there are also organizations that would step in and to support the city. Federation for American Immigration Reform and other organizations. And as well as that, perhaps even our top cop Jeff Sessions. So thank you for presenting this common sense ordinance. It's about public safety and the rule of law. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi there. How you doing?
Hi, thank you for taking comments from the community today. Um, I am a local resident. I am a member of Community Congregational Church, United Church of Christ, just down the street. And I'm a mom. And it's in that context I'd really like to address you today. Um, we were drawn to this community because we were told that it was a warm, safe community with great schools. And I have to tell you, as a mom, there's nothing more than I want than to raise my child in a community that is safe and warm and welcoming. But I have to tell you that this ordinance is sending exactly the opposite message and is accomplishing exactly the opposite. How can I feel safe about my child if I live in a place where my immigrant brothers and sisters feel afraid to report crimes to the police for the fear that they will be deported? How can I feel that this is welcoming to children like mine, who is an American-born but has immigrant roots, that her own family members, extended family members would not feel welcome here, might feel racially profiled here? This is, I think you need to think seriously about the message you're sending to young families like mine, who will very seriously question like I am whether I am in the right community, whether this is a place where you should raise a family. The last thing that I would like to address is the fact that I too love the Constitution and I understand being concerned about its values. And I would like you to remember the Fifth Amendment's guarantee of due process before anyone is deprived of life, liberty, or property. And if you read SB 54, which I encourage you to do, what it is doing is asking ICE to respect the Constitution. It's holding ICE accountable to the Constitution. If ICE wants to get a judicial warrant to arrest an immigrant, they should do so. That would be in Constitu, that would be in compliance with the Fifth Amendment. Um, the California Values Act is merely holding ICE accountable to the Constitution and helping to enforce the Constitution. Your ordinance is accomplishing exactly the opposite and is, is sending the wrong message to not only immigrant communities lawful and illegal, but also to Americans like myself and my family. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Edgar, Mayor Protem Kusamoto, and the council members. I just wanna extend my gratitude that you're willing to take all of this comment and offer your listening ear as you consider this very deeply. I'm the Reverend Melinda Teter Dodge and I co-pastor the Los Altos United Methodist Church. It's just about a mile and a half down in East Long Beach. I'm a faith leader in joint communities and I represent also CLU, the clergy, and Lady United for Economic Justice. Many people have already spoken to the, um, lack of groundedness and I would say lack of transparency behind this ordinance right now, so I'm just gonna state that the ordinance is a blatant violation of the city's legal obligation to follow the California Values Act. Tonight, I bring to you, however, the collective and diverse voices of my faith tradition and the communities with, with which I serve. I speak against this ordinance tonight as a community faith leader, a mother of children being nurtured in Los Alamos schools, a diligent Los Al school volunteer and girl and boy scout troop leader right here. I speak to you as a Christian leader who lives like you in a beautifully diverse community. Many of us feel united by the love of God through our interfaith and inter-ethnic relationships and united through our scriptural narrative with the major Abrahamic, Abraham, sorry, faith traditions. You see, it is an indivisible, an inherent part of who we are as a faith community, our work to care for one another. Our work to open our hearts and resources to learn from and serve alongside one another so that all may prosper. It is an inherent tenet of our faith and how we live our daily lives to welcome and honor all peoples. This is who we are as a faith community and I would say who we are as the great American city of Los Alamos and the state of California. We welcome all, we care for one another, we steward our resources so that all may thrive and we, we protect the vulnerable. But in considering and possibly enacting this ordinance, the city council is sending a clear message to our wide community that it does not want to protect immigrant communities and that it supports the Trump administration racist and anti-immigrant agenda. I implore, I would, I would ask for some grace and some respect. I implore the city council to defend and protect, not to deny or strip away the dignity and civil rights of the people who call Los Alamos and the state of California home. A tenet of my faith follows through me this evening. You shall also love the stranger, for you too were strangers in the land of Egypt. As you continue your work tonight and the days ahead, I implore the council to be resolute in its efforts to ensure that Los Alamos and the state of California is a true place of welcome.
Thank you.
For all peoples.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening Javier.
Good evening, council. Uh, thank you for, uh, the opportunity to speak. I have a lot of thoughts on this. I'm kinda scatterbrained, I don't have anything prepared, but, uh, I am extremely proud of my Mexican heritage, but let there be no mistake, I am 100% American. I am not a Mexican-American, I am an American. I am extremely proud of my grandparents and my parents who made those tough choices to come to this country legally. They fought and scratched and clawed their way and my father served this country and I'm very proud of him. It angers me that people use the term immigrant versus illegal immigrant or undocumented and they interchange those so easily. That is, they're completely different. I love immigrants. I have a lot of friends and family who are immigrants of many diverse cultures. We are not talking about whether we love these people or care for them. This country, the United States of America, cares for more immigrants, illegal and legal. That's not the issue. But we cannot sustain what, what is happening. All of this is snowballing out of control. And yeah, it's a double-edged sword, but I see our council tonight making a statement and we are the tip of the sword. In God we trust. Don't let the, the noise from this issue cloud your judgment. Warren, I thank you for bringing this item. I'm proud to be a Los Alamos citizen and a resident of this community and a proud American. I thank you very much.
How you doing this evening, sir?
Hi, um, my name is Nawi and I'm, I heard a lot of good people from Los Alamos today. And, you know, sad to, to say, the last time I heard about Los Alamos was when a city council member posted a, a poster or a meme of Obama with a bunch of watermelons in the White House. And now the council, the councilman brings the races here again to the city of Los Alamos. These people here that, that, can you let me speak?
Yeah, come on.
The, the races here, not from this city, from other cities like Torrance, Long Beach. The race, can you let me speak?
So you guys, let's show some respect. Let's just listen him out. Hey sir, address us, please.
I know, but I'm trying to.
No, I know. Stay with me. Thank you.
So it's, 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 um, I hear a lot of people talking about immigrants, illegal immigrants.
Yeah.
And we forgot to mention, who were the people already here? The indigenous people of this continent. Who was here? The Tonba were already here. The Hachiman were already here. Mexican people have indigenous ancestry. So I don't consider myself an immigrant or descendants of immigrants. I'm indigenous to this continent. This person here, Elsa, she still looks like a full-blood indigenous person, but she identifies as white. She, 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 she claims that she's hard, it's hard for her to find a job. She's not working right now. She spends her time going to, to her son's school harassing the teachers, talking about she's, their kids are being indoctrinated by the liberals. All I gotta tell her is get a job, stop being, making excuses. Arthur right here, this, this vice supremacist.
So hey, just, you know what?
You know, get a job, Arthur.
To me, I, I don't want you addressing other people. I'm on some silence here. I, sir, if you wanna continue on, please do, but address us. Thank you.
So my, so my point is this, don't bring hate to the, to this community. Los Alamos, I heard the, the young little girls speak, all the people from, from different races speak. And you know, like, they're, they're, they're about love and peace, but when you're bringing to the community all these racist bigots that go to different cities and harass people, you know, you don't, they, they interrupt the meeting. They talk about rules and laws and they, all they do is interrupt people. They get triggered easy. They're a bunch of snowflakes. So all I ask is for you to think about what you did because look what you brought. You brought these crazy people here. And again, now, Los Alamos is gonna be known for what? For racism. Before it was a, before it was that, that councilman that talked about the Obama eating the watermelons at the, at the front lawn in the White House. Again, now, again, this, we're here because this negativity that the city brought. So again, stop supporting racism, stop supporting these bigots, these trumpsters that, that hide behind, behind the flag. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down tonight. Thank you. Next up? How you doing tonight, sir? Hello?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem.
Yeah.
Uh, my name's Eric. I'm with OCIU, Orange County Mayor East United. Um, in the short notice that, uh, y'all tried to push this ordinance, uh, we put together a petition, um, that I'd like to hand over to the city clerk, um, for the record. Um, in two days, we did collect 84 signatures, um, against the, the, the motion or the ordinance, rather. Um, just real quick, if, if we're brown Nazis, does that make y'all Nazis? Is that the direct opposite? Um, at the end of the day, the, the, the idea or the comment that this is not racist or that this is not anti-immigrant because somebody said to look at the rugby team is racist, that is the equivalent of I have a black friend, so I cannot be racist. That doesn't make any sense. That is the equivalent of my wife is black, so I cannot be racist. We understand that that has been used for years to justify the fact that your anti-immigrant or racist agenda is being pushed. Let's just get those out of the way really quickly. Quite frankly, the California Values Act is within Constitution, uh, is under, is constitutional. At the end of the day, the ordinance is plain violation of the city's legal obligation to follow the California Values Act. I understand that you want to enact some sort of, um, uh, I don't know what, what drives you to bring this controversy if it's not necessary. It absolutely is not necessary for you to, uh, put forth divisive methods that bring the community out in such a rage that pit us against each other. At the end of the day, you, you're gonna have people that are absolutely anti-immigrant and for you to say that it is not is a blatant lie. Um, the city council has provided rather just no explanation or no legal merit, rather, as to why this ordinance or what this ordinance will do, um, other than exposing itself to a, a lawsuit that you will not win. So you're using taxpayer dollars, um, ineffectively. If the, if the city council truly believes, which has been said earlier, if truly believes the California Values, Values Act is unconstitutional, the proper course would be to seek a court ruling. I would suggest y'all do that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good evening Jerry.
Hi, my name's Jerry McGee. I was born and raised in Los Alamos. I've raised my son here. He's gone through the same schools I did. It's a beautiful little community and I will tell you, I have to apologize because you're sitting up there being called racist just because your skin is white and in that is racism itself. So what I'd like to say is, I would like to commend the mothers who brought their children to speak because I think an active citizenry and training your children up makes it a better community to live in. Though I would say you might wanna let them, um, provide their own words as opposed to reading someone else's because after sitting on the council, you get really touched by the children and the honesty that comes from them. Uh, there's a person from the ACLU that spoke earlier. She called you racist and yet I grew up in this community and we didn't really see race. I know that's hard for people to believe, but there were Hispanics, there were black people, there were Indian people, and the kids, we just played together. We didn't look at each other's skin color. This is what's dividing us. It's not that our Mayor Protem brought forward this resolution. This is simply just to protect us from those who might cause us harm. Other people have spoken here today that have said, I moved to Los Alamos because it's safe and I came here because of the schools. And I've seen on the news lately how MS-13 is bringing in younger gang members that are infiltrating the high schools and are taking over the high schools. So I would ask those parents, is that what you want for your children and for this community? This is not, I, I'm frustrated with myself that I'm getting drawn into this whole part of it that's racist, but I just wanted to set some things straight. I do believe what my husband said about we are the tip of the sword and I commend all of you for having the guts to sit up there and to listen to all the differing views. And I know you personally, the majority of you, and I know that you're good people. I know that you're gonna pray about this if you're God-fearing people and I know that you're gonna use your common sense to make the right decision. But when you are threatened with a lawsuit or getting reelected, which we've heard many, many times before, I will tell you this, as a Los Alamos citizen, I've got your back. And I will tell you, as many of you know, I am like a dog with a bone and I will make sure that if you move forward with this, which I encourage you to do, I will be there to have your back. I will rally people behind you and I will try and do it in a respectful, decent way. And the last thing that I have to say, there was a comment made about, uh, Mayor Protem Kusamoto bringing this forward merely because he wants to go up the ladder. I will mention to you that Mr. Carvajal- I will mention to you that Mr. Carvahal is looking to run for city council. So, Mr. Carvahal, the mirror is right there for you to look at yourself. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. Hi there.
Can you hear me? This is good, okay. So before I begin, I would like to, you know, specifically call, take my time to people who were here first, because I think people who are here first should have the most say in this ordinance. So is there anyone from the Vuu Indians who were here for almost 3,000 years? Are there anyone here from the Spanish colonizers in 1769 who came here? What about, what about Los Cerritos and Los Alamitos ranches? Or any of the Mexican, Belgian, French, and German immigrants and migrants who came here to work on the farms and the beet farms here? And I got this off your city website just in line, and I just wanted to highlight that, you know, immigrants are not only your future, they were your past. So my name is Tim, and I'm the activism director of the Orange County Young Democrats. And we are here to oppose this ordinance, because it would deprive immigrants of protection of California's laws. Under the Trump administration, the federal government is trying to pressure local law enforcement to become de facto immigration agents. And in response to this federal overreach, the state of California adopted these laws to prevent local law enforcement from being commandeered by the federal government. Specifically, the California Values Act prohibits local law enforcement from transferring people to federal immigration authorities and protects against unconstitutional detentions. Now, when SB 54 passed last year, it was a huge victory for our immigrant communities. But passing this ordinance tonight would only feed the rhetoric of fear that is propagated by the Trump and Sessions administration, and we believe this has no place in Orange County. Now, the city of Los Alamitos, you've claimed, some of you have claimed that this SB 54 is unconstitutional. But the Supreme Court has long held that states do not have to be active participants in the enforcement of federal policies. In New York versus the United States, the Supreme Court held that the federal government may neither issue directives requiring the states to address particular problems nor command the state's officers or those of their political subdivisions to administer or enforce a federal regulatory program. And so we believe that these century laws are not only essential to protecting the rights of our immigrants, it's also protecting the rights of public safety. We believe the police cannot do their jobs if they cannot gain the trust of the communities that they are policing, and they cannot gain that trust if they are seen as just another arm of ICE. Witnesses in crimes will not report crime if they believe contact with the local police could lead to being deported, as so many other crimes will go unreported. Furthermore, there are simply not enough resources for police departments to act as both local law enforcement and federal agents. Now, as the president and his attorney general talk tough on crime, actual policies show that they are more concerned with family separation than they are at putting real criminals in jail. And we hope that these priorities are not shared by the council. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Good evening.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. My name is Denise Miller. I'm not a resident of Los Alamitos, but I live across the street. Thank you for giving all of us an opportunity to speak tonight. I certainly appreciate it, and thank you for your service to the city of Los Alamitos. I can't believe anybody would call you racist, but I've been outside for three hours, so I've missed those comments. I am here tonight, having read the two assembly bills and the Senate bill that form the basis for the lawsuit brought by Jeff Sessions against the state of California, and I've read your ordinance. The woman behind me is making me nuts with her constant interruption of the speakers. Sorry about that. And I've read your ordinance, and I just don't understand why it needs to go forward. There's a federal lawsuit pending against the state of California about these issues, and I would encourage you just to drop the ordinance, let the federal lawsuit ride, see what happens, and we'll have direction for all the cities in the state of California at some point, following the conclusion of that lawsuit. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi there. How are you doing this evening?
Hi. Sorry, I'm new to using Facebook Live stream, so...
Yeah, well, it's my right as a U.S. citizen to be able to do this.
Okay, come on. Let's keep going.
Hi, my name is Michelle Teo. I am a, I am a citizen of, obviously, the United States of America. I live five minutes away. I have been here since I was eight years old. I went to elementary school here. I went to St. Hedwig's. I went to McCallum Middle School. I went to Los Alamitos High School. And I am not okay with this ordinance. I have friends who are undocumented. They are people. They are not illegal, and it makes me angry to be here tonight. I cannot believe I am here tonight in this city I was raised in. And it just makes me speechless. It makes me sad. This is not what humans do. Deportation is not okay. Mayor Protem Kusamoto, I apologize if I messed up your name, but for me, what I heard from you was, "I want to protect the businesses. I do not want to protect the people." There's so much I want to say. First of all, everybody who's been laughing about, "Oh my God, Indians, why are we bringing up Indians?" It is because we are living on indigenous land. We are living on the land of the Tongva Nation. The United States was founded on the genocide of Indian people. Oh, Lord, it's true. It's horrible. Yes, we paid the military to slaughter Indians, and I am not okay with that. We are all immigrants here, and I see people rolling their eyes. I see people rolling their eyes. I hear this. You are Japanese, I assume. Your parents or your grandparents came from Japan. My parents, I feel strongly about immigration because my parents are from the Philippines. While they are not undocumented, I know their struggles. I know how hard it's been for them, the racism they see, and as a woman of color, I grew, oh, Lord, oh, Lord, yes! I went to Los Alamitos High School. I did not understand race. I did not. I thought the same thing. I thought, "Oh, there's no such thing as race. I don't see it." It's because I was lucky that, as a privileged Asian woman in a white school, I was okay. I, well, actually, there was an instance of racism, that is true, where...
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Thank you. Can I ask the next speaker to come up? Thank you. How are you doing this evening?
Hello, Mr. Mayor and fellow council members. My name is Raphael. I'm from Torrance, and I'm with all the wonderful Trump supporters. They are not racist. I never been called chink or any kind of racist terms. I want to tell you, I suffer to you cooperating with ICE. Every country has their own immigration laws, and they should follow it. And our national language is English, and everyone has, everyone should be able to speak Yeah. If you go to the Japan, you have to follow their rules. Nobody even, nobody give them free stuff, because they come here illegally. I think a lot of people are calling me the racist, and my friends racist. You know who are the racist? Those people on the back. Yeah, call me banana, or what kind of language they call me, but I'm not afraid. If we don't have a standard of laws, then what's gonna happen? We are gonna have a pure anarchy. So please cooperate with ICE. Thank you so much.
Thank you. How are you doing there? Good evening.
Good evening to the honorable members of the council. My name is Pastor Sam Pullen. I serve at the Community Congregational United Church of Christ, just down the street on Cotella. I'm also a member of CLU, and our church was the first, and it is the oldest church in Los Alamitos, over 120 years serving in this community. I've been there for three years. It's been my privilege and my honor to serve in this community on many of the issues that you all deal with every day and that are very important to you. We operate a preschool that serves maybe even some of your own children. I know many of the officers who serve our community have their children in our preschool, and we're always looking out for the safety and the well-being of our community. We're also looking to care for those who are less fortunate in our community and to make a difference, and much of what you're called to do in your work is in that capacity. That being said, I'm very disappointed that the first opportunity I have to meet you and to speak with you is on the occasion of this ordinance, which I think is incredibly divisive to the community. You've heard from children, you've heard from parents, you've heard from residents of this community who are very shocked and concerned about how this makes us feel. It does not represent the values of Los Alamitos. It does not represent the values that I teach and preach every Sunday in our community. And by inviting in controversy, by inviting in conflict, what you're doing is dividing Los Alamitos. It is not bringing it together to reach the goals that we want to do. And there needs to be a way that we can come and focus on the things that we are called to do that are most important. And I tried to bring some of that today by bringing, instead of conflict, bringing some music, bringing some lighthearted concern and compassion to this gathering. And I hope that you, as your public responsibility, can have the foresight and the wisdom to resolve this enlightening conversation, much the way that you suggested. One of the options is just to take input, decide, you know what? This is not how we need to move forward for our community. This is not the kind of spotlight that we want on Los Alamitos. We want to be known for all the things that we're proud of. We want to be known, your legacy as public servants should be for the good that you're doing in the community, not for the things that you're doing to divide the community. So I hope to serve you in that common call.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good evening. How are you doing?
Good evening. My name's Rabbi Jonathan Klein. I'm the executive director of Clergy and Law United for Economic Justice, and some of my colleagues and good friends in the faith community have already spoken. Ours is a nation of immigrants. We always have been, we always will be. And in that context, our Statue of Liberty says, emblazoned upon it, "Looking out at the seas, give me your tired, your poor, your huddled masses yearning to breathe free, the wretched refuse of your teeming shore. Send these, the tempest tossed to me. I lift my lap beside the golden door." It's an invitation for the community to say that this is a great nation made of immigrants. And what we have, unfortunately, is a moment in time when there's been all of this progress and then a president who has threatened to essentially deport people that he's labeled rapists and murderers. And the sad thing is that as a state, we have been moving forward steadily with saying, "No, we actually value the inherent worth and dignity of all the people in this state." And we have a moment in a particular city where deep, deep disgust is growing, where racial slurs are abundant, where people are seen as only of a particular tribe or identity or of a specific background, rather than recognizing the inherent worth that all of our community has. I don't see how this law can even be understood as being a real law that you're trying to pass, an ordinance that is legitimate. We know that this will immediately result in a lawsuit, and we know that that lawsuit will lose because of all the examples that my ACLU colleagues and others have pointed out for why this is just a way to create fear and intimidation. So I beg of you, from my Jewish background, as someone who knows what it's like to not be able to be settled in a community, because my people, for thousands of years, were pushed from community to community, not welcome. In the Soviet Union, we did not have citizenship to a state. We were not entitled to be rooted in any place, and we know what happened to our people. And it's just time for this nation to move past the skin-deep analysis of who people are and recognize that all of us have ambitions to just live our lives freely and fairly, and that everyone should be afforded that basic dignity. I thank you for your time, and I hope you make the right decision and do not support this ordinance.
Thank you. Hi there. How are you doing this evening, ma'am?
Honorable Mayor Edgers and council members. I'm a resident of Los Alamitos with the Community Congregational United Church of Christ. My pastor spoke just before. I get to, I got to follow a pastor and a rabbi. Oh, well. I was stunned and appalled that Los Alamitos is even considering such an ordinance, challenging the California sanctity law. My parents came from, came to America from Ireland right after World War II. They were seeking sanctuary, sanctuary from poverty and starvation, with my brother, who was two weeks old. They came through their family, and a little later, they brought their sisters and their mother to America for a better life. We served the United States as builders, teachers, Port Authority police officers after 911 and before, veterans, nurses, and health administrators. We did pretty well. Even two of my brothers were pretty highly placed on Wall Street. We had a big family, obviously. This is a country of immigrants. Whenever we have treated immigrants poorly, without compassion, history has proved its shameful. Refusing work for the Irish, locking up the Japanese, refusing sanctuary for people fleeing the Holocaust, demonizing Muslims, which are my in-laws. We are a small city, 12,000 people about. We're 60, about 60% white. Let us not be the little city in history to refuse sanctuary to our neighbors, known for tearing apart families over paperwork. I know a Korean mother, she stayed over her visa so that her daughter could finish high school here. She was, she had a valid visa because she was still in school. I know a DACA boy who serves me at one of the local places. He stopped registering because he was frightened, and he lives in fear. He was frightened for his mother, who doesn't have paperwork. He's over 20 years old, 25 years old, 22 years old. How long has he been here? He was going to college. We don't have to have our neighbors living in terror. We should not fear them. They are us. Vote no, please.
Thank you. Good evening. How are you doing?
Great. Thanks for asking.
Yep.
All right, so I wrote a speech, but since I'm a college student, I procrastinated. I didn't finish it all the way, so something's gonna be off the top. Mayor Protem Kusamoto, Mayor Edgar, Councilwoman Hasselbrink, Councilman Chirico, and Councilman Murphy, I want to thank you for allowing me the time to speak today on the proposed bill to opt out of SB 54, better known as the Sanctuary State Law of California. One of the arguments that's going around is why you guys want to opt out of the bill is that you don't feel that you can fulfill your duty as a, as a council member who swore to protect the Constitution and serve the California law at the same time. While I'm not a lawyer, and I don't pretend to be one, I just want to offer the argument that the law in question, it does not break the law. Breaking the law would be if California set up its own, if it set up its own system to deport immigrants. It does not do that. What it does is just tell local law enforcement to not assist ICE agents in deporting undocumented immigrants. So I don't think, again, I'm not a lawyer, so I can't say, and this is not a court of law. Personally, I think you guys should wait until the Jeff Sessions, the Jeff Sessions lawsuit goes through against California, see what happens there, and then after that goes through, make your decision. That's what I would do.
We have the same friend group, we hang out with the same people, and I can tell you unequivocally, if this ordinance passes, some of our friends and their families are going to be in danger of deportation. I hope that you, as a parent, can understand the grief and the misfortune of having half your family sent back to a different country. So please, don't pass this ordinance. Councilwoman Hasselbrink, you said that you would support the ordinance if it didn't negatively impact the city. Many undocumented immigrants call Los Alamitos their home. They've lived here for years, and their kids go to schools here and were born here. If you do, go ahead and pass this ordinance and opt out of the Sanctuary State, you could be negatively impacting residents who live here and have lived here for years. I think that would count as negatively impacting the city. I want to thank you guys for your time, and please vote no.
Thank you. Good evening.
Hello, council members. My name is Chris Sal Rodriguez, and I'm here in representation of the California Immigrant Youth Justice Alliance, which is a statewide organization that works with youth across the state, including servicing youth in Orange County. I'm here to say that cities that are against the Values Act are going against the values of the state, given that residents across California have spoken and they want to protect families, stop the terrorizing of communities, and prevent the use of local resources for immigration enforcement purposes. The youth that spoke today also advocated to protect schools, libraries, and parks, and this is not any different from what I hear on a daily basis from the youth that I work with. The arguments presented by the city on why passing this ordinance is important are framed as legal, but in reality, I feel that they are an endorsement of the Trump's administration anti-immigrant agenda. And as an activist and community member who works throughout Southern California, I've come to meet many families, some are undocumented, but others are of mixed status, who have suffered tremendously when a family member is deported emotionally, mentally, physically, and also some actually undergo poverty as a result of deportation. Your intent to not abide by the Values Act places many families in jeopardy, and in your ordinance, at least the draft that I read, spoke about having contracts with the federal government as a justification for it. And this means that you're putting federal money over human rights and federal money over families. So I ask you, implore, that you be on the right side of history and vote no for this ordinance.
Thank you. Good evening. Hi there.
Hello. Good evening, members of the city council. My name is Carlos Perea. I'm the Policy and Programs Director with Resilience Orange County, where an immigrant rights organization and the county that also monitors cities like yourself that are willing to make attacks against our immigrant community. And let me tell you, history is not on your side. Also, I'm here to speak a little about this intricacies of the constitutionality. The state is well within its right to pass this law that protects its residents, and the Jeff Sessions and the Justice Department will lose in court. Secondly, you're also tackling with the administration because you will lose also in court. The city is opting to endorse the values of hatred, racism, and anti-immigrant sentiment that has so far emboldened violence in our communities and violence against our immigrant communities specifically. This is California now. These are changing demographics, where this type of hate is not welcome anymore. And let me tell you something else. Orange County is also changing demographic. So these ideas of hatred, these ideas of nativism are also dying out. So be on the right side of history and make sure that you vote no on this, or you drop this consideration, because otherwise, we're going to be fighting you. We will organize. We will make sure that you hear us loud and clear. The young people of this county are not going to stand up for this type of hatred. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi there.
Hi. I'm Stephanie Born, and I'm a Los Al resident. And I came from the city of Anaheim. I went to high school there, and I lived right in gang territory. It was very, very bad, very violent. And there was a form of intimidation going on when I lived there, and it was by a lot of drug dealers and the gang members, and they wanted us to keep silent and not call the cops when we needed help. And we ended up getting evicted because all of the drug dealers got kicked out of our apartment complex, and they blamed us. And there went their rent payments of cash only and stuff. So they blamed us. We got kicked out. I married my husband 16 years ago, and I was like, Los Alamitos, this is a nice place. I like it. Everybody's really nice and welcoming here. I had to tell him, hey, we have to keep the doors locked. And he's like, what are you talking about? And it was just such a different feel for me. And I have five children now. I'm a proud Latina. I'm a Native American, and I just love this place. And I was also part of the Democrat machine at one time. I worked for a state-funded program for low-income and minority students. That's one way that I was able to go to school. I would look students in the eye and try to help them any way I could. But I also realized at the same time that California, that there was some kind of conspiracy going on where they were saying the money is going to the kids, but like $300 scholarships, while the state-funded program was spending tens of thousands of dollars on ballrooms so they could have conferences. They rented out the entire ballrooms at the Hilton near the state capitol so we could have a conference while handing out $300 scholarships to these kids. I'm like, how could you do that? But I didn't say anything at the time because I'm like, I didn't fully understand what the heck was going on. But at the time, they had already put people in place throughout the legislature and the community colleges and the universities who would help illegal students. And looking at those kids, I wanted to help them, and I helped them as much as I could because they got to have a future. But the California state government has just caused a huge problem. They're trying to pick people against each other. You're illegal. You're an immigrant. Oh, you're white. You're this and that. And we have to take a stand. I got your back, 100%, okay? And I say, we take a stand here today and say, California, Jerry Brown, enough is enough. Okay? I mean, I want people to stay here, but I want to secure the border. We have to. And just peace to everybody, okay? Thank you.
Hi there, sir.
Hi, that was my wife, actually. I brought her over here to Los Alamitos from Anaheim.
Okay.
So I grew up here. I went to grade school here, and I've been here for 30 years or so, and it's a great city. Thank you for running it so well. I appreciate it. I'm an electrical engineer by training. I'm a project engineer now and an electrical engineer doubly in aerospace, just like somebody sitting there. I won't say who, but... And for me, this is a simple, we all took, all dummies took classes in Boolean logic. And to me, it's a simple AND gate. If A and B, then C. If you take an oath to obey the Constitution and you believe that a law is violating the Constitution, then C, you either step down or you change a law. It's very simple. So none of the people behind me or none of the people speaking before or after me get a chance to vote. That's not our job. It's your job to vote. So please vote C, whatever C is to you. If A and B, then C. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, city council. My name is Paul Scott. I went to Los Alamitos High School, active member of the show choir and other clubs. My grandparents have lived in Rossmore since the '70s. Los Alamitos, I believe, is one of the best cities in the area, but it also tends to be a little bit behind the rest of California's progressive politics because California is a little bit more progressive. That's true. While the rest of California overwhelmingly believes in being a sanctuary state, so much so, people have marched in the streets, our small conservative bubble seems to overwhelmingly believe that they are exempt from following California law. According to the preemptive doctrine in the Constitution, federal law trumps state law unless the state law gives more rights to the people, then the state law should win. In this case, the state law wins. Also, in the ruling of Arizona versus the United States, the Supreme Court ruled in 2012 that despite federal law having ultimate power over immigration law, the state preserves discretion to direct law enforcement agencies as necessary. Jeff Sessions, as you've all heard all night, is currently trying to take California to court for their sanctuary status, and since the Supreme Court has yet to make a ruling, Arizona versus the United States should set a precedent for this case. And I don't believe the city council shall vote on such an issue if Sessions' case is still in debate. If we allow you to vote against being a sanctuary city, then we are voting to tear apart families, many of which I went to high school with and I know personally. Somewhere along the lines, we forgot that our country is just a land full of immigrants trying to escape unlivable circumstances in their home countries in order to be their best selves and chase the American dream. Today here, I stand to protect the American dream we all used to believe in and speak for those who can't be here today in fear of the very legislation you propose that will ruin lives. These illegals are students, friends, hard-working citizens who pay taxes that we benefit from and are only here to make a better life for themselves and their families. We automatically assume illegal means they participate in other crimes, but statistics show little evidence that is true. On a personal note, I didn't come out as gay until college because I knew and witnessed how people in the school and surrounding areas within Los Alamitos, time and time again ostracized gay people and the little guy or minorities, or beat up choir friends because being in choir is gay, or how at Los Alamitos, there's only one to two tables that all the African-American students sit at. We're supposed to be so diverse, but they don't feel comfortable in their own school. I know what it feels like to be targeted for something outside of my control, and I can't stand to see friends and families be torn apart due to fear.
Thank you.
Especially when the fear comes out of hatred.
Thank you. Appreciate your time. Thank you. How are you doing this evening?
Hello. My name is Samuel Paramore. I myself am not a citizen of this town. I come from Huntington Beach, and I attend an immigrant rights group, Oregon County Immigrant Youth United. And I only bring that up because you state that this issue that you bring up is not bigger than your town. It's bigger than your town. Bigger than this, bigger than this country, it's bigger than the state, it's this whole country. And I feel like everyone's brought up already kinds of valid points, so I'm not going to restate this. And yeah, you're not going to be able to pass this, but let's pity the assumption that you do. What happens if you pass this? Pass the communities being torn apart, your own economy being just absolutely devastated by the lack of workers, the children having to be their own lawyers inside courtrooms? What do we see? What do we see when they're in the detention rooms and those doors are locked? We know that many, many people are raped and sexually assaulted inside detention halls. Many. There are deplorable conditions inside those places. Dozens die from diseases that are easily treatable outside of those places. And then, that's just a few things. And then when they get outside detention, when they're finally deported to Mexico, not given anything that really will take care of themselves in a country they don't understand because they didn't come from it. They're devastated. They're left homeless. They're left going to drugs, to crime to actually take care of themselves, you know? And the question is, who are the real criminals here, really? And there's another conversation we had, why people come here, really? What we as a country do to these other places to make people have to come here? But that's a discussion for another time. So I really want you to look past this little bubble and see what happens to people when they actually end up in these places. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Hi there.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Bob Nelson. I've lived in the Los Alamitos community for 47 years. All my kids have been raised here. Thank God, they're all now grown, but anyway. Let's go back to when we had President Obama. Remember the conflict that he had with the governor of Arizona? What happened there? She decided that she was going to apply federal law. President Obama said, no, you can't do that. This is a federal issue. What did he do? He basically scrubbed her off the list, and he did what he damn well pleased, okay? You're taking the same case that we've got right now in the state of California, except now it's flip-flopped the other way. Now Jerry Brown and those people decide that they're going to decide what the hell happens in this country. I'm sorry. According to the ruling that was done by the Ninth Circuit Court about three years ago with this Obama versus Arizona, Arizona lost because they tried to enforce the federal law. Now that Jeff Sessions is in there, now they want to enforce the state law, and what's happening? You've got the state officials who are saying, no, you can't do this. I'm sorry, you can't play it both ways. You've got to play it one way, or you've got to play it the other. And it says that the federal law trumps state law. It's real plain. I understand this is probably going to go to the Supreme Court. God, I hope it does, and I don't see any way in hell that we lose it. Not at all. And I think you guys are doing the right thing. You guys are opening a little bitty peephole for the people in California that don't believe in letting these people have free run of our state. I mean, look at the people in, how about that lady up there in Oakland? She, basically, the day before ICE was to show up, she told all these people what was going on. ICE has said that they could not find 900 criminals, not illegal aliens, but just criminals, because this lady got away with it. As far as I am concerned, her butt should be in jail. That's all I have to say, ladies and gentlemen, and like I say, let's be the one, the tip of the sport for a change, okay? And I'm sorry if a lot of people don't like it, but there's legal and there's illegal, and they're completely different. I'm sorry. And I don't think we should, I don't think we should keep supporting these illegals. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hi there, sir. How are you doing? Hi.
Can I wait till I get the...
Sure.
Okay. My name is Richard Spix, SPIX. I'm an attorney. Sometimes I mispronounce that liar. And I do housing work in Orange County and in LA County as well. I've done about 6,000 units of substandard housing, tenant defense, on a rent-strike model. These are nasty squalor. You wouldn't like them. I know if your kids are going to rent somewhere, ask me. I'll tell you where not to rent. Every city has its armpit, so to speak, but one of the most common things I hear from my clients, who are oftentimes monolingual Hispanics, is that the landlord is threatening to call ICE on them if they don't pay them the rents. And that is a significant issue for me because I have to try and overcome this and to get them to participate in the, in quotes, justice system that we enjoy here in America. And the Sixth Amendment right to jury trial has been very good to me. I've had about 400 of them, and it's statistically not likely that a landlord is going to win. And so I would encourage you to think about that. See, just a month ago, I had a client who was a single mother of four in a one-bedroom paying $1,600 a month for squalor in Santa Ana. She stops paying rent. The landlord says he's going to have ICE waiting there at the courthouse for her. And I'm sure you've read about instances where the sensitive location definition that ICE uses, in quotes, has been relaxed and that they have, in fact, picked up people at courthouses. One of the things that the Penal Code does that Jerry Brown had nothing to do with was it defines that kind of a threat by a landlord as extortion. And that extortion, if a DA is going to prosecute that, what does it require? It requires witnesses. And it's hard enough to get these people, I'm bilingual, it's hard enough to get folk that live in these conditions to come forward and raise their eyes off the sidewalk and take the chance with me, and the only thing they lose is they get evicted if they lose, to have them try and give testimony against their landlord who has victimized them again. And ironically, though, it may qualify them as a witness tampering crime for a U visa, which is just amazing to me that they would be so ignorant of the consequences of their actions or don't care, one of the two. And I encourage you to do the right thing tonight.
Sure. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
ICE uses, in quotes, has been relaxed, and that they have, in fact, picked up people at courthouses. One of the things that the Penal Code does, that Jerry Brown had nothing to do with, was it defines that kind of a, of a threat by a landlord as extortion. And that extortion, if a DA is going to prosecute that, what does it require? It requires witnesses. And it's hard enough to get these people, I'm bilingual, it's hard enough to get, to get folk that live in these conditions to come forward and raise their eyes off the sidewalk and take the chance with me, and the only thing they lose is they get evicted if they, if they lose, to have them try and give testimony against their landlord who has victimized them again. And ironically, though, it may qualify them as a witness tampering crime for a U.VISA, which is just amazing to me that they would be so ignorant of the consequences of their actions, or don't care. One of the two. And I encourage you to
Sure. Thank you.
To do the right thing tonight.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Good evening. Hi there.
Yes, my name is Wes Parker. I'm very familiar with Los Alamos. My dad owned a business here, and I worked at that business, a gas station on the corner of Cattell and Los Alamos. I just want to thank the city council here for the ordinance. I believe you should uphold it. The rule of law is very important, because there's no vacuum in power. We will either be ruled by this republic, where our voices count, we will be ruled by a dictator, we will be ruled by gangs, or we will be ruled by anarchy. So basically, you even see where we're not, we're disobeying the rule of law from a representative form of government. We have gangs now ruling many cities. We have California, we have gangs here, we have Jerry Brown that has turned California into a Confederate state. We have the mayor of Oakland, who is now what is called a gang watch, a gang lookout. So plus, we have to also keep in mind, we can't have business owners living in fear. They have, California has forced a need for clarity on this issue. Business owners must know that they are safe to cooperate with ICE, they cannot live in fear. I'm not worried about illegal aliens living in fear. I want them living in fear like every criminal should be living in fear of law enforcement. American citizens need to count first. Of course, needless to say, basically what we've done is we've turned our ICE agents now into basically public safety officers. They're not really enforcing immigration laws, they're just using deportation as a way to get rid of the most violent of the illegal aliens. What we're going to be looking for, it kind of makes this kind of mute, we will be asking President Trump to basically take all ICE agents out of prison, and what we want is a task force to put those ICE agents and do enforcement in the workplace and then in the schools. We definitely, we want people deported simply because they're here illegally, no other reason. They do not have to commit some other crime first before they're deported or to be qualified for deportation. Raymond Herrera has a great idea. He wants a task force, for example, a thousand ICE agents to just come enforce immigration laws for the illegal alien criminals who have stolen jobs away from American people. We have to have the rule of law in this here America. We cannot have two standards, where if I get pulled over for speeding, imagine if I get pulled over for speeding and says, "Well, you can't give me a ticket for speeding because I haven't robbed a liquor store in the last two weeks." But basically, we've got illegal aliens, you can't deport them, right? We've got to justify them as because they have committed some other crime? No. We want illegal aliens deported, so we'll be asking Trump, "Stop deporting criminally illegal aliens." And we want you to deport the two illegal alien commissioners here in Huntington Park. We want you to deport the illegal alien that Jerry Brown hired as an attorney, because if we are not going to go by our rules of law, we have nothing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening. How are you doing?
Hello, I'm Laura Costa. I'm a resident here in Los Alamos, and I went to the schools here, too. The schools were, were very welcoming. I went to Hopkinson, and the teachers were very supportive. Went to Oak, same thing, Los Al, same experience throughout the school system. And I think if it weren't for them, I wouldn't have made it as far as I did in my education. I worked, I recently finished the graduate program in Long Beach. I worked two jobs, applied for scholarships, and I was able to get it done. I don't think, you know, Dreamers, undocumented immigrants, I don't think anyone took any opportunity away from me. I think if you work hard, you'll get what you want, and whether you're undocumented or not, I think hard work is hard work, and you deserve to get the rewards for everything you put your effort into. I was just disappointed this morning to read the paper and realize that, you know, that there was a small city in Orange County that was seeking to pass an ordinance to defy California's sanctuary law. And I was, I was just upset to find out that the city that was in Orange County is Los Alamos. I'm just, I didn't plan on speaking here today, but I'm just hoping that you realize what this ordinance stands for for many people, and the values and morals that people believe this up, this is going against or coming off as racist. I, I just think that, I hope you reconsider this ordinance, and I hope you realize that Los Alamos has always been a diverse city, and I'm hoping that you vote to represent everyone in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Hi there.
Good evening. My name is Caitlin Seitz, and I am with Orange County Immigrant Youth United. And illegals are taking all of the jobs. And illegals are lazy. They don't do anything, and we give them things that they don't deserve because they're not working. Let's talk about the myths that we base policy on, the contradictions that there are. Again, extensive research has shown that immigrants are less prone to crime than those who are born here. I wonder what it would be like if I showed the stats of people who are born here, of the shootings that they have committed, the crimes that they have committed, but we're not bringing those up right now. But I wonder what it would be like if we took up your time with that. Of the people who have committed those crimes, those whose family line has immigrated, their immigration line has been so long ago that it's been enough for us to be in denial about it. I want to share this fact, that Native Americans weren't granted U.S. citizenship until the Indian Citizen Act of 1924. 1924, Native Americans, people who were on this soil before us. Let that sink in. Let us talk about the subjectivity of citizenship and how we have the power to frame the narrative, and how you, right now, have the power to, to frame that narrative, and that it is, there is something more important here, something more important about the humans that we are talking about right now. And let's talk about them as they are humans. It is not about a group of people that are dangerous inherently, and that they are inherent threats to the people who are the safe people. The world is more complex than that, and you know it. It's not brave to make policy that forces us to simplify human beings into those two categories, those that have papers and those that don't. It is not brave to make an impractical statement that you know would not hold up in court just to make a statement. If the city council truly believes the California Values Act is unconstitutional, the proper course would be to seek a court ruling, and I advise that you do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Hi there.
Hi, my name is Ursula. I am a resident in Los Alamos. I, I heard about what was going on. I'm going to read from LA Times. This is what I read about what the agenda is. Says, "The city agenda report argues that the state law is at odds with the U.S. Constitution, and it infringes on the rights of the citizens of Los Alamos. In view of this contradiction, it is impossible to comply with both the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of California. In this situation, the belief is that the Constitution of the United States has precedence over the Constitution of the state of California." And what is the Constitution say? It's called a supremacy clause. The supremacy clause of the United States Constitution, Article 6, Clause 2, establishes that the Constitution, federal laws may pursuant to it, and treaties made under its authority constitute the supreme law of the land. You, as city council members, you took an oath in office, the oath of office that you swore in, it says, "I do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and I will defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear truth, faith, and allegiance to the same, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge their duties of the office on which I am about to enter, so help me, God." So please uphold, please uphold your oath to the Constitution. And I, I would really urge you to please not lie, and, and when you're under oath and you took that oath, and I respect you, that you guys are standing up to the tyranny, the tyranny of California. Governor Brown does not run our lives, he does not take presidents over the federal government. That's a state thing. Let's do the right thing and obey the Constitution. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Bring it back to the council. Bring it back to the council.
Yeah, at this point, I wanted to thank everybody in the community for coming forward, and at this point, I'm going to bring this back to the council, and I'm going to close public comment. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mayor Pro Tem Kuzma, see what he'd like to do next, and then if we have an interest, I'm moving on this. What I'd like to do is to have the city attorney read the ordinance and at least serve it up so that we can take an up-down vote on this, but Mayor Pro Tem.
Oh, thank you, Mayor, and I echo, you know, the thanks to the members of the public that spoke, and wow, I mean, 51 speakers, I appreciate everybody's input, and moving, it really is. And I, I understand the perspectives, and, you know, I think, to frame it again, it's, it's not an immigration issue, it's, it's a law issue, a constitutional issue. And, wait, 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 please. And, and I think the thing is, I, I am the product of immigrants. I stand here before you as a person who's descended from someone who immigrated from Japan, two people, and I am here by the grace of God. And I think because we are a nation, and a state, and a city of law, I think that's something really what's in my heart that's, that's driving this. I know a member of the public asked why, and why now? And to be honest, this started back in November. This started back when, when our state legislators were up there contemplating this law, and I didn't think it would ever pass. I really didn't, and I am just shocked that it has. And then, the bullying part, if you recall, there's a statement by some leader up in Sacramento that says that, "If you cooperate, I am going to come and arrest you." And how crazy is that? That is just, that is just cra, and that is what, that is what is in my heart that says, "We, we owe this to our people here." And again, I know another member of the public said, "This, this, you know, goes beyond our borders," and, and I understand it does, but, you know, we're up here to deal with the folks that are in, within our borders, and it's not a matter of a border issue. But there, there are other cities in here, in the, in the county, that I hope that they're taking a hard look as to, at to what they're doing for their constituents, both residents, citizens, voters, non-voters, employers, employees, because someone had mentioned, I think, about, "What are you going to do when all the employees leave?" The employees are here, and they deserve the equal protection as well. The ones that are here legally, that are here in E-Verify, the ones that are here with the work permits. So that is all what we have. So I, I am going to ask that, again, city attorney, I will make the motion that we adopt this ordinance, and if you can read the
I'll make a second. If you could read that. Are we go? And I'll bring it back to the council for comments, but let's go ahead and read the ordinance.
If I may read the title of the ordinance, the ordinance before the city council for consideration is Ordinance Number 2018-03, entitled, "In ordinance of the City Council of the City of Los Alamos, California, Adding Chapter 9.30, Constitution of the United States Compliance."
Great, thank you. What I'm going to do now is I'm going to turn this back, we've got a motion, a second on the floor. What I'm going to do is open and see if any of the council members want to comment. I'll start with you, Councilmember Murphy.
Thanks a lot. Thank you. It's obviously a very passionate group on both sides, received more emails and phone calls on this issue than I have on every other issue combined in six years. There's a lot of division in the country right now, but there's a lot of spirit here also. You know, it's obvious to me that you can't pick and choose which laws you want to obey. We are a country of laws. April 15th is coming up. Can I opt out? Me too. I am against sanctuary cities. I don't, I don't, don't get too excited yet. But I, I wear a hat as a city councilman, and the question is to, to me and my colleagues is, are we doing the right thing for the city, and is this the right vehicle for us? I think we would be better off with a staff report, a consideration of other avenues of protest, consider the legal ramifications of this and other avenues of protest, consider the costs, consider the United States versus the state of California and how it will affect our ordinance. And finally, I believe this shows the need at the federal level for action and resolution of this matter. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Chirco.
Sure, thank you. So I, I too have concern with what Sacramento has done here in, you know, forbidding cooperation between city employees and federal agents. And of course, you know, my concern is not with everyday immigrants. You know, my, my focus there is more on the limited number of criminal illegal immigrants. However, I am not a state legislator, I am not a congressman, I am a city councilman for the small city of Los Alamos in Orange County. And my focus is on our residents and what is best for our city. And I cannot see how passing this ordinance would be good for our city. I, I, I am certain we would be facing litigation by the end of the week, and I would encourage anyone who thinks litigation is a good idea to take a look at our, our budget for this year, our budget for next year. We don't have the resources to do that, to fight a long lawsuit. We're not the appropriate venue for this. There is a federal lawsuit pending right now in the Eastern District of California. That is the appropriate venue to decide whether or not this law is constitutional, because there's arguments on both sides, and nobody here that I've heard, and nobody here is a constitutional scholar. That's what we have the federal judiciary for, and they will make the determination about whether or not this law is constitutional. We disagree with Sacramento a lot, on a lot of things. Are we going to start passing laws that say we're not going to follow state law every time we disagree with them? I don't think so, and I don't think that that would be prudent. I, I like Councilmember Murphy's suggestion that we look at other avenues for expressing our opinion, but not opting out of this law. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I appreciate the comments from my colleagues, and, and I agree with the Councilmember Chirco about Sacramento, I don't agree with them a lot, and, you know, there have been many times that this council and previous council, you know, members here, we have tried to fight Sacramento. We had the sober living homes, if you recall, that we were looking at a way to fight that, and we just gave up the fight. And we gave it up because it was tough, and it was going to be costly. And you know what? If, if we had just stuck to it, I think we might have been able to shape and effect common sense legislation. So another member of the public asked about Adult Use of Marijuana Act. You know, I opposed it. It was, you know, clear that the members of our public, our constituents, were in favor of allowing the growing and, you know, use, growing and use of marijuana per the Adult Use of Marijuana Act, and, you know, I understood. I, I didn't agree with it, I acquiesced, and, and the one thing I really wanted, which was, to me, was common sense, let us require our people, our residents, to lock it up when they're growing in the backyard. Lock it up! And that got shot down by the public, and I could not believe this. It's like you've got a, an attractive nuisance growing in someone's backyard, and do you think that if someone got wind of that, that they would jump over their fence and harvest that? That's just common sense, and that got shut down. So I knew where the constituents lied, and I listened to them. But, you know, we tried, and, and there have been, you know, we, we tried the predators in the park, we, we tried that and got shut down, and this is that time where, you know, this is our finest moment to really send the message to our constituents, our, the voters in our city, that we're looking after them. Yeah, someone mentioned about being in the bubble. So what if we're in the bubble? The bubble is what we make it and how we protect ourselves and how we sustain and fund ourselves. And that's what we're trying to do. We had a budget workshop earlier, and it's tough. It is really tough. We have a lot of mandates, we have a lot of requirements that are out there that cost us and cost us dearly, and we're contemplating a one-cent tax increase, which is costly to our residents. And that's, we contemplate that to look at how we sustain our, our way of life and our bubble, if you want to call it that. So to my constituents out there, I'm trying, and, you know, if, if this doesn't pass, it's not because of lack of trying. And I thank my council colleagues here. I apologize for putting them in this really difficult position, but this is something that we need to do, and we need to do this now before it's too late. And thank you very much.
Thank you. So, Councilmember, Councilmember, how's it going?
Thank you. First, I want to commend the two young ladies for getting up here and speaking. It's not about whether you agree with me or not, it's not about bad parenting. It starts at home, where you start enabling and encouraging your kids to be passionate and to and to speak on that. And kudos to the parents for letting them speak. They were respectful, they were passionate, and they were educated and I thank you for that. No, and I saw the fear in the little girls and I don't want that to happen. That should never, ever discourage anybody at any age from speaking. So I'm proud of them. Whether I agree with them or not is irrelevant at this point. They got up and they were respectful and they spoke. And thank you very much for allowing them to do that. So I'm going to go back to my high school government class and the Article Six. And that pretty much is the law of supremacy, where when two, the state government and the federal government contradict, it defaults to the federal government. And in December of 2014, I took an oath to uphold the Constitution of the United States and also the Constitution of California. So now I have two entities disagreeing with each other and I have to go back to Article Six and what prevails. You know, I found it ironic that the state of California chose to exempt themselves from this federal law, but then they're up in arms when we choose to exempt ourselves from the state law, both based on philosophical principles. So, you know, we're doing the same thing and one is right and one is wrong. I just find that ironic. You know, since 2011, 2001, we partnered with federal and state and county and local agencies to strengthen our ties against this. You know, this has never been to me about immigration, this has always been about illegal immigration. And I wanted to go another way and it would almost be like addressing drunk driving and taking the word drunk out of it and just addressing driving. You can't do that, you've got to keep those two words together. And we are addressing illegal immigration. I am all for legal immigration. I've been to naturalization ceremonies, they're amazing, they're passionate, they know more about US history than I do. They know more about the Constitution than I do. I am thrilled that we have a system set up that allows people that want a better life in our country to legally go down that path. And yes, we are a nation of immigrants. I get that, I love that. This is not about legal immigration, this is about protecting the illegal immigrants. It is not about going and being afraid of walking down the street because you're a Mexican-American. This is about an illegal immigrant creating crime in our city, in our state, in our country and not being held to the same consequences that anybody else who does something illegal, running a stop sign, stealing something, murdering somebody, there are consequences to that. You don't get the luxury of freedom when you do something illegal. So I am strictly keeping this on legal versus illegal. And whatever you want to put after that, whether it's immigration or driving or anything else, it's legal versus illegal, period. It's very simple to me. So with what I, my oath in 2014, I need to uphold. I owe it to my city and to myself and to my family to uphold my oath to support the US Constitution. Thank you.
Okay, so a couple of comments. In 1985, I took an oath. I took an oath to defend this country and the US Navy, like many of you guys as veterans. And so, you know, my dedication and my oath is to the Constitution. You know, a lot of speakers have come in here and talked about, hey, no, you know, Los Al, what are you doing? This is too big enough. You know, pay attention to the city council, pay attention to the city. This city has led the nation in schools, it's led the nation, and even in this county. You know, if all of us are on boards and commissions in this county, Orange County Sanitation District, Orange County Transportation Authority, Orange County Fire Authority, and we sat back and said, you know what, we're just too small, let's let Anaheim run everything. That's not what we do. We are the chairman of the board of these organizations. And you know why we do that? Because we are Los Alamos and we sit back and we make a determination of what we're going to do. You know, I, as a mayor of this city, I ask every mayor of all cities of California to at least take on the issue. Look, tonight, we gave you guys a fair herring, we were respectful, we listened to every word you said, and you know what? It's a tough one. And, you know, for people that brought their kids and they got hurt, look, this is activism. This is what happens. This is, you are playing with the real stuff right here. You know, some of us are on board, some of us are on commissions. People are calling the boards that we're a part of and saying that we should not be a part of their board anymore. These are the types of things that happen, but you know what? This is hardball. You know, and again, as the mayor of Los Alamos, we are not a sanctuary city. And furthermore, what I would say is that, you know, we believe in the supremacy clause. There's no doubt that Jeff Sessions will adjudicate this at a higher level. I respect the only lawyer that's up here, which is Councilmember Chirco and his comments and I'm sure from a legal basis, you know, that's what his opinion can be. I would also say another avenue to, I would call it belt and suspenders, I would recommend that we pass this ordinance for whatever determination it would go. But I would also say that we potentially consider filing an amicus brief or refer into the court to Jeff Sessions to add that there is cities in California that do not believe that the state is going in the right direction. And so what I would ask, I would ask the Mayor Protem Kuzemodo if he would open up this and allow me to add an addendum to this order that would basically say that, and we would also direct staff to file an amicus brief on behalf of Los Alamos in this federal issue.
I would be delighted to accept that amendment.
And I'll second that since I was the second before. Again, guys, we really appreciate everybody being here. We're going to take this to a straight up-down vote. I would just ask my colleagues and I would pray for this community that, you know, sometimes things are bigger than what we are. And for the constituents that are out there that you feel that this does not represent you, you know, for that, you know, being on a city council is the hardest job. We are in the retail politics business. When I get out of here tomorrow at Von's, I will hear how bad I was. I don't have to wait for a poll, I don't have to go to church, I don't have to do, I know exactly where I stand. And you know what? I've lasted 12 years and I think, you know, I've heard other council members, you know, another barometer as a community that you ought to think about? I've got council members coming up here that was a little bit of a battle zone, that I honestly, I'm surprised, you know, we, here we finally think of something that we can have kindred spirit on. Mayor Protem Kuzemodo, you know what? I admire your courage, I just, I really appreciate for everything that you've done.
Thank you.
So on behalf of the city council, we're going to go ahead and I'm going to call for the question. All in favor of the, basically supporting this, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
No.
Okay, passes four one. We're going to go ahead and, we're going to go ahead and have a 15-minute break. Thank you.
American patriots.
Thank you, we appreciate it. We'll be back, we'll come back in about-- We're going to go ahead and call this to order. Thank you, everybody, please take a seat.
No, we have to take a seat.
Thank you, guys, please take a seat. So within the city of Los Alamos, we actually have an ordinance that says that after 9:45, we would have had to vote before then to continue the meeting. So at this point, what I'm going to do is I'm going to table all the remaining items that are on the agenda and we're going to move into closed session. And city attorney, could you read us into closed session, please?
My apologies.
That's okay.
The city council will now adjourn into closed session to discuss items appearing on your agenda listed as A, B, and C.
Great, and when we're done, we'll come back out and report. Thank you, everybody.